Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30, and I will call this work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. The clerk would note that all council members are present, and our leadership team is also present. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person if they so choose. Or the public may also watch this session online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. This is a work session, and we go directly to our business at hand. And the first item on the agenda this evening is the city hall, the Police City Hall project financing update. Presenting is our Deputy City Manager CFO Jenny Rhodey, and she will also then introduce our consultant who is helping us with this. City Manager, do you want to make some opening remarks before Deputy City Manager CFO?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Just by way of reminder, both for the council and for the community, at your work session in November of 2023, the city council gave direction to staff to move the Police City Hall project into design development. We are well underway with that, as a matter of fact. So landing page out on our webpage, burnsvillemn.gov-accessburnsville, and that's where you and the community can find all of the information about the project, about our work through design development, that we're actually planning to wrap up and present to you in your August work session. I can't believe it's already July. I was stumbling over months there. So we'll be back to talk about our progress through design development, and that's where we'll be asking the council for direction. If you recall, we kind of segmented the pieces of the design development and construction of this particular project into kind of groupings for the council to make some decisions along the way. So this conversation was part of the commitment that we had made to the council, as you had given us direction in November, to further assess and to consider alternatives when it comes to project financing, particularly using the council's preference of our current policy, which uses utility franchise fees, fees paid by fee payers on gas and electric utilities to use as a source of financing for the project. That's consistent with the council's current policy, the policy the council's had for a number of years now, to fund municipal facility projects or the city's facilities using those franchise fees to ultimately be the source of revenue for our, what we call our facilities fund. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny Rhodey, our Deputy City Manager and CFO. Mayor, to your point, who will also introduce a familiar face to all of you, one of our consultants from Ellers.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. We've been working, partnering with Ellers over the past few months, since our November 28th meeting, on further assessing the financing alternatives or the preferred financing alternative using franchise fees. We've also taken a look at and done a study of franchise fees in amongst other cities and our comparable cities as well, and we've done a rating evaluation with Standard and Poor's. So we've been busy over the past few months. Tonight, Dan Tinter from Ellers is here to present the results of kind of that many kind of franchise fee study that we did, and also alternatives for financing the projects with franchise fees. So with that, I'll leave it to Dan.
All right.
Welcome back, Dan. It's always good to see you in the room.
Glad to be here, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Tinter. I'm municipal advisor with Ellers and the aforementioned familiar face, so thank you for the welcome. I do appreciate it. This evening, as mentioned, we'll discuss the police and city hall financing, and then also specifically the franchise fee study. This evening, we have a handful of goals for the work session. We're going to review some financial projections that have been prepared, consistent with the city council guidance from the previous handful of work sessions where we've touched on the project financing themselves, the status and health of the facilities fund, and then ultimately some guidance that the council provided, selecting franchise fees as the preferred vehicle to finance debt service related to three major facility improvement projects for Police City Hall, followed by Fire Station Number Two and the maintenance facility. And I'll talk about some of the assumptions baked into those project financings as we go through the presentation this evening. We'll also talk about how, based on our assumptions, those impacts affect the rate payers within the community across individual classes. You may recall at a previous work session, we talked about really kind of writ large how much revenue the city would need to raise in order to satisfy the debt service requirements, and now this next step is really drilling down a bit more and looking at individual class rates and seeing how they might change, consistent or sometimes inconsistent, as we'll talk about, with some of the peer communities that Burnsville traditionally identifies with. Of course, one of the main goals of this is receive feedback from the city council. We'll be walking through three alternatives this evening, and we would want some discussion, and then ultimately, we're looking for some guidance for next steps, and we'll talk about those later in the presentation themselves. Now, we've touched on a few of these things in the introduction to the presentation tonight, but this conversation, this slide would tell you that it began in November 2023, but everyone around this table, and for our friends watching at home that have been paying some attention, know that this conversation's been going on for quite some time. So the city, the city council, the leadership team have really been quite deliberate and thoughtful in really designing and developing the three major projects that are identified in the model itself, and then also considering the financial implications. So back in November, we did, as mentioned, talk about three different alternatives to finance the facilities. That was 100% property taxes, 100% franchise fees, and then a 50-50 mix for points of comparison. And at that time, the council had selected the 100% franchise fee option, and that was consistent with how the council had funded major facility projects in the recent past, using facilities funds and the franchise fee to cancel debt service to make those debt service payments. So as the city manager mentioned, what was ultimately selected was consistent with the city council's guidance. After that, we did the, what has now become something of a spring tradition for me, updating the financial management plan for the city in March 2024, and we went through the various funds, and we talked specifically about the facilities fund. That also gave us an opportunity to update the capital improvement plan assumptions, because the city had updated information every year. Your list of capital projects changes, the amount of money that you're going to spend on them, the amount of fund balance, the estimates that you receive from your outside and internal engineers and project managers. And so we really tried to make sure that all of that was up to date. So when we were performing this analysis, we were really using the most contemporary financial information. As the deputy city manager and CFO mentioned, in May, we went through the rating evaluation service with S&amp;P, and we did receive feedback from them on two scenarios, and ultimately, what's being presented this evening is consistent with the feedback we've received from the credit rating agency. So we did take some soundings from an external organization, because obviously, the council's very interested in maintaining the AAA credit rating that the city currently enjoys for all of your debt financing. And then, of course, we come to this evening, July in 2024, the franchise fee, what we've termed the class rate study, and really now, this is our opportunity to build on the guidance that we've received to date from the city council, and really start to hone in on what those franchise fees would actually look like, should the council decide to move forward with these facilities projects and finance them using franchise fees. So I think is, everyone is accustomed, when we do these kind of projections, we like to outline the various assumptions that we use. We are ultimately looking out over a 10-year period, and you may recall, from time to time, I'm fond of saying, if I'm sure of anything in this projection is that it's wrong. This is the best guess that we have, looking out over a 10-year period into 2034 and planning accordingly. So it's worth noting that over time, this will change. I also imagine that the city council, the leadership team, as it would move through these projects, if the council decided to move forward, this analysis or something like it would probably be updated before a 2029 decision and a 2033 decision. But right now, for points of comparison and to inform the city council discussion this evening, we've made some assumptions and looked out into the future, so at least you have a sense of the order of magnitude and the potential challenges with each of the alternatives over time. So as you make a choice today, you'll kind of understand generally how it will impact tomorrow. We've also made some major assumptions about the project bond estimates. So what is currently included in the plan is consistent with the pre-design estimates provided by the city's outside architects and engineers, adjusted for inflation, and then the bond amounts are actually consistent with what the council reviewed in November of 2023, which was referenced on the previous slide. So really, as we're drilling down to these options, we're trying to keep as many things as consistent as possible, so it can really be more of an apples-to-apples comparison as you consider the alternatives over time. Now, it's worth noting that some of these assumptions may change, primarily as the city gets further into the design process and gets refined cost estimates when construction plans are prepared and your construction manager provide more specific cost estimates. Thankfully, the model is robust enough that we can input those new assumptions and make changes accordingly. But right now, we're just remaining consistent with kind of the, what I would call the latest and greatest information. So ultimately, this evening, we'll be reviewing three alternatives or options. There is option number one, where we really are just adjusting all of the rates by the same percentage across the various class rates. This option, as we walk through it, will look very familiar to the council and leadership team, primarily because this is the same option that the council selected in November. So when you reviewed that 100% franchise fee, 100% property tax, and the 50-50 mix, you selected 100% franchise fee, and option one is that alternative. And that's also to basically pull a thread between the work session in November and the work session this evening. And then option two and option three are actually variations on option number one. Option number two is where we adjust across the classes, the different rates, and we'll talk about those specific percentages when we get into those slides. And option three is where we adjust those class rates individually, and then we actually phase them over a couple of years. The council may recall at the previous work session in November, there was a specific request for some type of phasing approach. We've selected two years for the points of discussion today, but there's no real magic to two years. It could be three years, it could be four years, but there are trade-offs as you phase in those rate increases over time, and we'll talk about that when we get into those slides. A few other assumptions, and I've touched on some of these, those costs are based on the pre-design estimates, so we're trying to remain consistent with what the engineers have prepared to date. We have assumed that there'll be a four-year interval in between the projects, and so when you look through the information, you'll see the years reflect that, when the financing has to come online and when the franchise fee adjustments have to follow. We've assumed inflation based at basically 4%, and that is, again, consistent with what the engineers have prepared in their modeling. And we've also, and this is a very important assumption, we are supporting the existing CIP needs, something that the city manager and the deputy city manager CFO, and I think the council was very clear about, was that there was no intent to use the existing franchise fee revenue to pay for these new projects. As the council knows, the facilities fund supports really all the facilities improvements for the city and the community writ large, meaning things like the Ames Center, the ICE Arena, and the golf course. As such, this model basically does not mortgage those rates in order to pay for these new projects. So what we're trying to do is pay for everything the city has planned to do to date and is currently doing, plus the new projects, and then we're creating those rates accordingly. So, and that's primarily because we don't want to get into the future and have to come back, and the city manager was very clear about this, and not ask the council for another rate increase or a change in the rates, because we were making assumptions about what was available and what was not available. Right now, this model assumes you're paying for everything you're currently planning, plus the facilities projects. Now, with that stated, that's something the council can change in these assumptions. You could decide to move projects around, or to adjust how it is the facilities fund operates and what it supports. But much like when we do these presentations, we build our assumptions based on the current direction and guidance from the city council. We try not to make assumptions about what you may or may not do. That doesn't mean you can't do those things, it's just something to keep in mind when we build our assumptions. And then ultimately, it excludes any potential projects as a result of pending studies. As the council is aware, there's a number of planning activities and reviews that are underway that will come to your attention at some point in time in the future. That information is not handy for this presentation this evening, so it's excluded, and it's worth noting that if those studies and inventories and reviews have substantial amounts of information in them, or have certain costs, this analysis may change as a result of it. So it's something to keep in mind. And like we have over time, we're including all of the currently projected housing growth, I believe, until 2028. So something to keep in mind there. As Deputy City Manager mentioned, as a part of the process, we did take a look at some comparative analysis, and really looked at the 15 peer communities that Burnsville traditionally identifies with, and we also looked at five more to really take a look at what was happening with franchise fees in and around the metropolitan area. And I would draw your attention really to the bottom line in each of these tables when you look at the range max. Given the debt service requirements of the various projects, when we're talking about looking at comparative analysis, really what we're looking at is, what is the ceiling that we see elsewhere in the metro? Kind of what is the marketplace for franchise fees, and how can we adjust things accordingly? And so as you see kind of on the residential basis, the maximum rate is about $7. That's actually the city of Brooklyn Park, which is one of your peer communities. And when we performed the analysis and the rate structure restructuring in these subsequent slides, we really tried to look at what was happening on the residential side, understanding that was the high watermark. So we tried to stay within really earshot of that or arm's length of it, because we know eventually we'll have to talk to the utility providers, and they will look at what other cities are charging when they're evaluating and giving you feedback on the fees. It's also worth noting, and we'll talk about this in another slide, the overwhelming majority of rate payers are in the residential class, so that rate is especially important when designing a fee structure that can support the debt service requirements for the facilities funds. Additionally, especially when you look in the, in both the electric and the gas utilities, on the larger commercial industrial classes, you can see that the max range is actually above at $263 than what the city of Burnsville currently charges, and we move into natural gas, you can see at 258, 315, and 810, those are significantly higher than what the city currently charges. So we do know, at least on a comparative basis, there is room to move upward in those fee categories on the commercial and industrial side. And in fact, if we look even wider out than the 20 communities that we identify, that we would generally consider in and around kind of Burnsville's size and peer, we see other communities that have higher rates than this. In fact, if we were to look, the highest flat rate on an electric example for large commercial industrial is actually the city of Northfield. They charge $990 per month on the electric utility for large commercial industrial. And if we look at natural gas, the city of Noka is actually the high watermark for the, their largest commercial industrial users at just rate around $992 per month. Now, those communities are not generally considered comparable to Burnsville, but when we're looking at franchise fees, I think it's important to cast a little wider net and see kind of where are people charging fees, what are those amounts? And really, when you look at that, you can see that there is quite a bit of area to move, especially on the commercial industrial side. So it's just something to keep in mind as we go through the analysis. We look at the estimated average monthly accounts. Again, as I mentioned, the vast majority of them are residential. In fact, between the electric utility and the natural gas utility, it's about 90% of all rate payers. So really, when we're structuring a fee that is designed to support the level of debt service requirements that are contemplated in the facilities improvement projects, we really do have to buoy most of our expectations to the residential class, because it will create most of the revenue. Now, you'll see with the adjustments on some of the commercial sides, we can actually slide some of that revenue share around, and we'll talk about what that looks like in a second. But really, when we were designing the analysis, we were trying to keep that residential rate within somewhere near that $7. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process. Under the current fee structure, it's worth noting that with these class breakdowns, at this point in time, about 48% of all of the revenue raised from the franchise fee currently comes from the residential classes, and then the balance, 52%, comes from all of the other categories, all of the commercial industrial, be they large or small. Really, you can kind of think of that right now as a 50-50 split approximately between residents and the commercial industrial properties. And that will be important as we evaluate some of the options and talk about how that revenue share moves around. So we can hop right into the option number one. Option number one, as I mentioned, is the same alternative that was selected by the city council at the work session in November. It would adjust the franchise fees paid by all classes by 120% for the Police and City Hall project in 2026, and then it would adjust by 20% for Fire Station Number Two and 25% by all classes for the maintenance facility all the way out in 2034. It's worth noting that, at this point in time, there are no planned increases in franchise fees between now and 2026, the first year of debt service for the Police City Hall project, but after that, this model assumes that there are 3% increases in the interim years, and that really is an attempt to phase in those larger increases. If you didn't do those interim adjustments by, let's say, 3% or 4%, those increases for the debt service for Fire Station Number Two and the maintenance facility would just have to be larger in those given years. So knowing that, at least from a modeling perspective, that those projects may be forthcoming, we have started to adjust the franchise fee on an annual basis, once the debt service for the Police City Hall project comes online. Now, the thing to keep in mind is, and really, of course, this presentation, we're going to pay most attention to Police City Hall, because that really is the most immediate need and the most proximate project. At this point in time, if you were to do 120% increase across all the classes, really option number one, as we've coined it, for the resident, it would go up basically $4.80. So go from a current rate of $4 to $8.80, and then you can see those 120% adjustments in the small CI and large CI categories. It's also worth noting that you'll see between utility and the natural gas utility that they are same or similar. That's a function of the statute. The statute says that you have to treat the utilities on a same or similar basis, and most communities really opt just to treat them exactly the same. So when we look through the various classes, you'll see that the amounts really line up between the electric utility and the natural gas utility. It's worth noting, though, that the city generally raises more money from the electric utility, and that's primarily because there are more electric utility users. And that's not uncommon. That's very consistent across all communities. Generally, people just have more electrical needs than they have gas needs. Not all homes have things like gas utilities, so it's just something to keep in mind when we look at that. So really, you see the increase to 80 on the residential side, and that large CI goes from about $180 to $396, and we'll talk about some of this on an annualized basis later in the presentation. But just for the monthly purposes, you can see that if we were to go all the way out to 2034, the residential rate payer would be at $15.76 in order to support the debt service and all the other plans that the city currently has for the various facility projects currently planned in the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, can I ask a question? What's considered a large CI?
So generally, those will be your largest users over a certain kilowatt. They tend to be things like very large schools, churches, big box stores, things of that nature. It really depends on the usage. Not a problem. When we look at the fund balance...
Ted said you're funny stuff at the wrong time.
Exactly what he was.
Hey, a little levity is good for this kind of stuff. When we look at option number one from Facilities Fund Balance Projection, you can really see that at the end of 2034, with the adjustments that were proposed on the previous slide, the fund actually has about $51.1 million in balance. Now, that may seem like a lot, and truth it is, but really, the fund balance requirements for the fund, when you load in the debt service, they actually increase to just under $19 million. And you may recall that the council's direction to date on this topic has been that really, the city holds in reserve a rolling average of your capital projects, 35%, and that rolling average is really to acknowledge the fact that capital projects can be, and to use a technical financial term, they can be lumpy. They're, you know, they're episodic. You often go through a period of saving and a period of spending, and so maybe one year you're spending $1 million, next year you're spending $3 million. So we smoothed that out. Additionally, because this fund will support debt service and does currently support debt service other facilities projects, this fund balance requirement also assumes that the city will hold in reserve one year's worth of debt service for the subsequent year. So basically, we're taking that 35% rolling average, kind of what you spend on your regular projects, year in and year out, and one year's worth of debt service. And that's generally to accomplish a few things. One, with the rolling average, is just to make sure that you have enough money in the fund over time to fund your ordinary capital activities. The debt service is designed to make sure that you can support your debt service needs in the event the facilities fund and the franchise fees were ever interrupted or lower than what you anticipated. And that's primarily to make sure that you would never have to use property taxes to basically make a debt service payment in the future, or at the very least, you would have at least one, and under this model, really kind of two years of time to figure out what, if anything, you wanted to do, or if you were going to use property taxes, you had an opportunity to pivot. So really, it just puts the council in the strongest possible position to really know how they would react to a situation in the future if the franchise fees were ever affected and you still had to make those debt service payments, and you didn't have to adjust the property tax levy by a lot in a given year. The other thing to keep in mind is that if you look between the balance of the fund and the fund balance requirement, that gap, that additional fund balance, what's kind of available to spend, in the opinion of Ellers, is about $18.7 million. And again, that may sound like a lot of money, and nominally, it is. It's a large amount of money. But you have to look at the activity in the fund. Right now, this fund is currently proposed to borrow and spend just on the capital projects for the three facility, major facilities projects, about $210 million. So really, we're holding an excess balance about less than 10% of the cost of those projects over time. And that's primarily because when we're looking out over 10 years, and we're not exactly sure when these projects are going to land, and at what cost, and what decisions this or a future council might make, or what other needs may impact the facilities fund, we want to make sure that the council, both currently seated and seated in the future, has the maximum policy priorities and prerogative to make adjustments and use the fund to support the needs of the community. Now, when we get later in the process, this is cash that the city council could use. So you could use it potentially to subsidize the rates, meaning lower them. You could use it to reduce the amount that the city borrows in a given year for a project. So let's say if the project is $100 million, you potentially could spend $10 million of cash and borrow $90 million. These are all things that you can do, and really, what this model helps the council do is preserve your ability to make those choices both now and in the future. The other thing is, and as I mentioned in the assumptions, we know that there are any number of studies that are currently underway that will have financial impacts on the community. We know that the Ames Center will need certain improvements. We know the golf course will need certain improvements. We know the ICE Center will need certain improvements. Some of those are known today. Some of them will be known five years from now, some of them will be known eight years from now, and this fund, under this fee structure, is designed to basically allow the city to accommodate those needs, both known and unknown. So something to keep in mind as we go through this, and all of them are structured in this way, for that very reason. So as you know, there are advantages and disadvantages on any of these options, and really, the thing to keep in mind is, the main advantage of all these options is they maintain strong facility fund balances in the way that I've described, that it was really, in talking with the city manager and the deputy city manager CFO, that was a north star, making sure that the fund had enough money in order to accomplish all of its needs, both now and into the future, and really do so in a reasonable way, when we consider how the rates ought to be structured, considering the makeup of the various classes and rate payers, and then, of course, what we see comparatively among your peer communities and elsewhere in the metro. It maintains that current revenue share among the classes, so the nice thing is, if you adjust everything by 120%, everyone is essentially paying their same proportionate share. And as a result, that is, like the third bullet point mentions under advantages, easier to explain to the rate payers. You have projects, those projects cost a certain amount of money, you're going to use franchise fees to pay them, and you have to raise it by a certain amount, and everyone gets the same amount. Nothing has really changed as far as the structure is concerned, except you just need a little more in order to make those debt service payments. Of course, there are disadvantages, as we've kind of talked about, and you saw on the other slide, when you look at the fees compared, especially on the residential side, that $7 mark, you wind up with really the highest in class fees, especially on the residential class. And so it's just something to keep in mind. It's not, and we class as a disadvantage here, but that's not necessarily a good or bad thing. It's something that you just need to know, that if you go this route, you would ultimately just have higher franchise fees than your peer communities. Now, the thing that I always caution councils and folks about is that comparing can be a very difficult thing, and we don't necessarily know where those other communities are at and how they're, where they're at in the life cycle of some of their facilities, and when they may have to make repairs or improvements, we don't know how they're going to finance them. So for example, they may use the property tax levy, so they might have lower franchise fees than you, but higher property taxes because of how they opted to fund something. So it's just something to keep in mind when you're considering comparisons, is that all of these communities are a little different, all of them have different service levels and expectations, and all of them pay for things in a slightly different way, but it's just noteworthy to say that you would just have some of the higher franchise fees. The other thing to keep in mind, it implements the franchise fee in a single year, so there's a little more sticker shock with this one. When we talk about option three, that's phased in over two years, so that does give folks a little more opportunity to absorb those increases over time. But the one thing I would mention, and when you look, especially on the residential side, we're really talking about what ends up being $4 to kind of $4.80 per utility per month. So while the percentages, when we talk about 120% can be a little eye-popping, when we actually do the math, you can see that really on a dollar-for-dollar basis, the numbers are not huge. They don't reflect kind of the, what you would think with 120%, because we are working from $4 per utility per month. So just something to keep in mind. And it doesn't allow us to adjust individual class rates, so we're using, in this situation, really a very broad brush stroke in order to obtain the revenue requirements that are needed to support the debt service. So moving into option number two, we can actually, and this was one of the virtues of this study, is we can look at the individual classes... of this study, is we can look at the individual classes and actually make adjustments to individual class rates. So as under option number two, you can actually see that the increase for the residential rate is actually lower than option number one. And this is because we've adjusted the residential rate by 100% and then we've adjusted the small commercial industrial classes by 140% and the larger commercial industrial classes by 160%. So in this way, it's a bit more progressive in terms of the rate structure than you saw in option number one. And that's primarily under the theory that the commercial industrial properties, in particular, the large commercial industrial properties, have a greater ability to pay. Additionally, those commercial industrial properties are also using the city's right-of-way and the franchises in order to bring their goods and services to market. So they are benefiting economically from using property that's ostensibly owned by the city versus a residential rate payer that is using the franchise and the utilities, really just for the care and enjoyment of their home. So one is really just living in the community, the other is using the community's assets to really advance their business interests, which is, of course, an okay thing. But in this structure, what it's designed to do is basically shift some of those costs to reflect how the various parties are using the right-of-way and how they ultimately use it. Are they making money using it or are they not making money using it? And so as a result, we end up adjusting it and having those small and large commercial industrial properties pay more. The other virtue of this particular option is, as we know from the comparative analysis, there is more room to move on the commercial industrial side when we look at the other communities that are charging franchise fees. As I mentioned, in some situations, we see fees for the largest commercial industrial users just shy of $1,000. So that means ultimately, on a comparative basis, there's more room for the city to move and less to move on the residential side. We know the high watermark for residential is $7. And in fact, in our analysis, we can't find a city elsewhere in the state that's higher than $7 on a flat fee basis. So really, when we're thinking about what does the marketplace of franchise fees look like, we see $7 or $8 is probably leading or close to leading the residential classes, whereas things like 28, 80, and especially on the large commercial industrial classes, 468, in some situations, can be less than half of what we see charged in other communities. In this situation, though, what ends up happening is we see that we have a little more fund balance because we're still adjusting that franchise rate fee up for the residential side and we're increasing it more by those commercial industrial properties. So what ends up happening, and under this model, is you have about $43.2 million left at the end of 2034. Your fund balance requirement, as I described in the previous slide, is still right around $18.7 million. So under this model, you actually have a little more fund balance to quote-unquote "play with" over time, about $24.6 million. Again, to tend to those debt service requirements, to fund other projects, both known and unknown, to reduce the amount of borrowing in the future, to subsidize rates. So this is cash that the council can spend, and that's just something to keep in mind. We've kept it all in fund balance, understanding that it's the council's prerogative ultimately decide how it gets used. So we haven't made those assumptions for our analysis this evening. Of course, as we move forward in the process, the council may express guidance on this topic and these models can be adjusted accordingly so you can understand how a use of cash in a certain year may, in fact, may impact the long-term projection and the overall costs of the various projects from a debt financing perspective. Of course, as you can see, there's many advantages, like we've talked about, maintaining those very strong facilities funds. I'll be a broken record on that one. That one's going to come in option number three as well. So it is more progressive than option number one because, again, we're shifting more of that cost burden to those commercial and industrial properties. And as a result, it does allow you to remain more consistent with your peer communities for your franchise fees. The residential fee stays closer to what we understand the highest fee in your peer communities to be, and we move upward on those commercial industrial ones and understand that there is space to move there. So just a little more consistent than what we see in option number one. And it is the lowest residential class rate among the various options, so that's something to keep in mind. But again, we are talking about the difference between $4.80 and $4, but it's lower, so we'll call that out as being something that is absolutely true. There are some disadvantages. Again, it can result in those higher fees. You're still going to go to $8 under this model and we know on the residential side, $7. And we know that on the commercial industrial side, many of your peer communities do have lower commercial industrial fees. So those fees will still be higher than what we see in some of those peer communities. And like the previous option, it does implement it in a single year. So those commercial industrial properties that are experiencing a higher increase will have a little more sticker shock than they did under alternative number one. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And we do have an inconsistent franchise fee increase across those classes. So under this model, you really do have to do more splaining about why is it that those fees are being adjusted differently among the various classes? Before, it's, we need more money, everyone's paying about the same, we're increasing it all by 120%. Here, we're increasing things by 120%, 140%, 160%. So there is more public education that would have to happen in this area to basically help the community understand why the council ultimately selected this option and what is the kind of philosophy and the analysis underpinning that selection. Additionally, and again, we have it as a disadvantage here, and it's really more noteworthy than anything else, is that it does end up shifting the revenue sharing among those classes. So in this model, it ends up going to 42% for the residential rate payers and about 58% for the commercial industrial payer. So in big round numbers, you can essentially think of this one as 40/60. The previous one was 50/50. This one's now 40/60. So now we move into option number three. Option number three is essentially option number two, it's just phased over a couple of years. And so as you can see, under the Police City Hall, we only do the phasing in one year. And again, this is for two reasons. One, we want to make sure that the analysis is as comparable as possible among the various alternatives, so we didn't want to break everything out into multiple phasings. And two, since Police City Hall is the most immediate project and the thing that is at the forefront of the council's decision-making process, we spent most of our time focusing on that. Additionally, and I guess we'll call this, kind of, I said there's two items, we'll call it 2A. Fire Station Number Two and the Maintenance Facility, we do adjust the franchise fees by 3% annually. So those are being phased in to a certain extent, but in those individual years, we're not breaking them out. So under Fire Station Number Two, there'd be a 20% increase in that given year. We're not breaking that out as like 10 and 10, like we're doing with Police City Hall. So what ends up happening in this scenario, the franchise fees are, end up for really those residential classes, we break them up by a 50% and then a 37.5% increase. And then for those small commercial industrial properties, it is, it ends up being basically 70% in the first year and 40% in the second year. And the reason they're not equal is because of the, what Warren Buffett calls the eighth wonder of the world, compounding. So we're basically raising them by 70% and then we're raising another 40% on top of that. So we're taking advantage of the 70% from before. So you get a lower rate increase in the second year. And then for those largest commercial industrial properties, we do end up then with 80% in the first year and 50% in the second year. So they do have the opportunity essentially to absorb some of those costs over time. But as I mentioned, for Fire Station Number Two and the Maintenance Facilities, those rate increases are consistent with the previous options at 20% for Fire Station Number Two and 25% for the Maintenance Facility. So no change there as far as comparing the different alternatives. So we've done with the previous alternatives, we've taken a look at the fund balance. And at the end of 2034, this particular option has just under $40 million, $39.8 million. And the fund balance requirement does remain the same at 18.6 because we didn't adjust any of those debt service requirements between the different alternatives. And so in this scenario, you have about $21.1 million of gap in between the amount of money that would be available at the end of the 10-year projection and the requirement that you would have based on the policy currently established by the city council. Again, not to repeat myself or sound like a broken record, that cash is all something that the council could use for, again, to essentially subsidize the rates, reduce the amount of borrowing, or spend it on other projects, either now or at some point in time in the future. So the advantages and disadvantages for option number three are quite similar to option number two. Again, I mentioned, our North Star is making sure we're protecting those fund balances, so all of these rates are kind of predicated on that idea. It has that more progressive franchise fee structure than option number one, and it does really allow you to remain even more consistent with your peer communities. In fact, that first rate hike does not take you past the highest residential franchise fee rate. You actually go to $6 in that first year, and so that would actually keep you in line with places like St. Louis Park, Eden Prairie, and Brooklyn Park. So something to keep in mind when you're considering that. And then ultimately, that's because we do phase in over two years. In that second year on a residential basis, you actually go to $8.25. So much like the first disadvantage mentioned here, you can still result in higher overall franchise fees than some of your peer communities. Now, the nice thing about phasing it over two years, you give your peer communities two years to kind of catch up. We know in some situations, some of these fees have not been adjusted in a few years, and so it's possible, much like the city of Burnsville is considering that some of these other cities may also be contemplating adjusting some of their rates. And I think, as I shared with the group in the past, at Ellers, we have been talking to a number of cities that are interested in using franchise fees for a number of alternatives. And so it's possible over time, as franchise fees are more in vogue, so to speak, we might see some of those rates creep up a little bit, both because more communities are coming and using them, other communities are adjusting them upward to do new programs or respond to inflationary pressures in the programs that those franchise fees support. But you get a couple of years, basically, for others to potentially catch up, so they might be a little closer. Nobody has a crystal ball, I can't tell you they're going to do that, but I think we generally know rates, fees, charges, property taxes go up over time, so it wouldn't be surprising to see that on the franchise fee front as well. We still have those inconsistent adjustments. So again, you got to do a little more splaining because it's not all flat, you're making some adjustments and you're making some decisions about who should pay more or less. And as a result, it still has that same shift in the cost burden, but it just takes a little more time for you to get there. So under the first year, in that first kind of phase in, the commercial properties would pay about 44%, excuse me, the residential properties would pay 44% and the commercial industrial would pay about 56%. And then in that second year, once the phase in is complete, it actually mirrors option number two, and you have 42% for the residential classes and then the balance at 58% for the commercial industrial classes. So that revenue shift happens a little more gradually, and because of that, like kind of we talked about before, since it's phased in, folks don't have to, especially on the commercial industrial side, absorb those rate increases all in a single year. The last two bullet points, I'll take them kind of in reverse order. Because you are adjusting the rates by various percentages and now you're phasing them in over a few years, it is more complicated. You now have more variables, there is more explanation and public education that is required for folks to understand what is happening and why, and now, when is it happening? And so that's something to keep in mind as well, is that it's just more complicated, so there's just more of an opportunity for confusion. Again, not necessarily a good or a bad thing, it just might mean that the city has to do a little more work on the front end to make sure folks understand and appreciate what will be happening with the franchise fees over time. And then this one also creates additional costs for the city. So the way this model is currently structured is we are assuming that during the phase in, the city is subsidizing the rates. So you are essentially not collecting as much revenue over those two years because you do have debt service requirements and you're basically making those debt service payments and you're using a portion of new revenue from the phase in and you're using a portion of fund balance to make those debt service payments. So there's not as much money over a 10-year period because you're essentially spending it on subsidizing the rates. You do have an alternative here, you could structure the bonds and have what we call a step-up structure, where you would pay more principal in the first few years. So let's say, I'm making these numbers up, the first year you'd pay $500,000, the second year you would pay a million, and in the third year you'd pay 1.5. And then you would basically tie the revenue growth to what your debt service payments would be. The downside with that is you retire less principal sooner, so you end up paying more interest expense. So it's just more costly because you have more debt outstanding longer, so you just pay more interest. So if you decide to do a phase in, really, either the city will end up subsidizing the rates and not building as much fund balance, or you'll pay more in interest expense as you do so. And so that is the trade-off. Folks get to kind of pay a little less and then pay a little more, but because they're paying a little less, the city has to pay a little more because we know that the cost of the projects and the debt service requirements, while those numbers may fluctuate a little bit, for the purpose of this model, they're essentially fixed. And so we know that those expenditures have to be made in some way, shape, or form. So it's just something to keep in mind. So as we look kind of across the three options, just by utility type, again, I'll focus on the Police City Hall project. You see, across all of them currently, everyone is paying $4 on a residential basis for electric and gas. For Police City Hall, it would go up $4.80 for option one, for both utilities. Option number two would go up $4. And then, as I mentioned, in option number three, there's a phase in, so that first year it goes up $2 and then another $2.24, excuse me, $0.25. But really, when we're talking about these different alternatives, I'd be remiss if I just didn't mention that when you look at the actual dollar amounts, the amounts on a residential basis are not too different over the two years. So we're really talking about less than a dollar, or in the largest case, in that first year, $2.80 if you're considering the first phase against option one or option two. There are, of course, larger dollar amounts for those commercial industrial properties, but since the balance of your rate payers, 90% of them are residential, we are focusing on them for the purpose of the presentation tonight. And as the council and the staff has, we do have documents that do have the breakdown by all of them, the slides that were presented previously. So then, what it ends up looking like on really a more aggregate basis, when you look at option number one, you can see currently, the resident would be paying $8 between both utilities or a total of $96 per year. That would move to $7.60 per month or a total of $211.20 per year. Under option two, again, the current basically remains the same and that goes to $16 because we're doubling the residential class rate going up by 100%, so they'd pay $192. And then under option three, again, the current remains the same. In that first year, they would pay $12 and then the second year, they'd pay $16.50 in total. So the total amount on an annualized basis would be $144 and followed by $168. If we look all the way across all of the projects, you can see really, by the end of 2034, the total franchise fee under option one would be just over $378 per year. Option two would be about $343 and then, under option three, $344. So you can really see that even over time, the difference between the various options on the actual amount that a resident would have to pay don't vary all of that much. And you can see ultimately the total change, 282, 247, and 248 by each option. So just something to keep in mind. The thing that I would stress, of course, is that whatever option the council ultimately chooses for this first tranche of projects, this council or a future council can, of course, change its mind. There is, the council can't obligate a future council to keep using this option. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, I would imagine, since the council and the senior leadership team has been so thoughtful and deliberate, that there would be other studies before Fire Station Number Two and the Maintenance Facility. So some of these rate changes may change based on how the council decides to move forward, when the projects happen, what costs they happen out at, how you choose to use cash. These things can change over time. Because of course, under this model, we're looking all the way out to 2034. So it's a good guess, it's our best guess right now, but there's a lot that can change between now and 10 years from now. So really, this evening, as I kind of mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there are a few things to really think about. The first is, really, given the guidance that the council has provided to date, these three alternatives have been prepared. Option number one was the option that the council originally selected back to November, and then option two and option three are variations really on option number one. Option two has that more progressive schedule, and then option three has the same structure as option number two, but then the council could essentially opt to phase it in over two years. And so really, at this point in time, for the purposes of the work session tonight, it's my understanding that the city manager and the deputy city manager CFO really need guidance from the council about kind of how they would like to move forward, given the analysis to date. The other thing to keep in mind, assuming that the council selects a preferred option, there are a few next steps. These projects, they're still kind of working their way through the process, so the council will receive updated cost estimates in the near future. And then really, at some point in time, the city will have to reach out to the various utility providers to talk with them about these proposed rates based on the preferred alternative of the council. They are really your partners in collecting this revenue on your behalf, and they will potentially have some feelings about these fees and may provide you with a certain amount of feedback. So that's something to keep in mind, is that depending on how accommodating the council wanted to be and really what the feedback you get from the utility providers, what we present this evening may change based on that feedback. But of course, that would only happen at the direction of the council. But I think it's just worth noting that whatever is selected tonight, assuming the council does emerge of the preferred option, after reaching out to the utility rate providers, there may be another alternative that would have to be analyzed to reflect whatever feedback they provide. And in case you were wondering, these are the best-performing batteries on the market.
No Kirkland brand on there?
No Kirkland, actually, the East Circuit is probably... No Kirkland, actually, the East Circuit is probably the best bang for your buck, that is the Dollar Store brand. These amounts reflect continuous use of a computer mouse or a remote control. So carbon zinc apparently is the way to go. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about franchise fees or batteries.
Very good, members of the council. Any questions? First, I want to also let our residents and businesses know that this is not the first time that, it's the first time as we as a group came together to hear this presentation. But each of us have been working with staff and study groups to really understand the impact of all of these numbers with all of the three different options. So you may not hear a lot of questions from members of the council, because we've been in study groups and have asked a lot of questions, but for tonight, for everyone's edification, are there any other questions, members of the council, that you have for Dan and our deputy senate manager, CFO, or the city manager? No questions? Any comments on the, because each of us have had individual sessions, so you understand where your preferences were, and is anyone ready to make any comments about where your preferences are on option one, two, and three? Dan K.
I wrote some notes, because there's a lot here. And it's the first time we've seen this, so it's a lot to digest. Gotcha. It's not the first time, thankfully. Well, I know there's a lot of people watching this meeting, I know there's business community members that are watching this meeting, and there's some residents that are watching the meeting. We've been shared recently some newspaper articles by our Burnsville Historical Society curator from 1988, where Mayor Dan McElroy was championing a building, the very one that we're sitting in, and the planning, the community involvement. And there was actually a second article where it was noting that in the first planning meeting, the number of people representing the city dramatically outnumbered the members of the community who came and were interested in participating in the process, and hopefully it got better over time. But back then, that was a 30, 40, maybe a 50-year investment to move into this building, and it was, I'm sure, very expensive.
I remember.
In those dollars, in those days, to do something of this size and magnitude from where the city hall was currently at, which was dramatically smaller.
Yep, it was in County Road 13, where we were located at that time. Small, but I remember those meetings.
As you well know, being there and here, we're in a very different place, but we're really in the same circumstance. We're dealing with pressures to expand the building, and we're now taking this 30, 40, probably 50-year view. I don't know that they did a 50-year view, but they thought back then, I think it was more of a 30-year view. We got at least 30 years out of the building, but we had to put some money in it on a couple occasions to expand it, police, five, six years ago. And we've taken sort of that, what's the least cost that we can get away with to meet the need and go forward for a short period of time. Clearly, the pandemic has changed the dynamics at play, inflation has dramatically changed the dynamics that we're dealing with today. The 4% build-in for inflation, for construction inflation, I would say that's probably half of what it needs to be. We still haven't seen construction inflation get below double digits, and everybody hopes it will, but there seems to be factors that kind of support maintaining very, very high expensive construction inflation. And that's a very important for everybody to remember, I'm going to come back to that point. 10-plus percent annual construction inflation. By the way, that sounds really low when you think just two years ago it was double that for two years in a row. Having 40% construction inflation over a two-year period of time basically cripples anyone's ability to build and invest in capital. Unless you have really, really low borrowing rates, we no longer have low borrowing rates, and we have high inflation. So it's tough to go into an environment like this and think of spending $96 million. But I want you to remember that 10% plus construction inflation, because that's going to be a reason why I believe we have to make the decision that we're faced with. I do like option three, Dan, because I favor less shock, a little bit more gradual ramp-up, even though that's just a two-year ramp-up, that's better in my book. I believe we have to be sensitive to people who are on fixed incomes, we have a lot of senior citizens living on social security in the city of Burnsville. And we may think, and we certainly have many times said, you know, this increase is less than a cup of coffee at any coffee brand you want to name, I don't want to name any and isolate them. But in reality, these folks that are living on social security are counting every dime of expense that they have. And for the businesses, they're no different, they just came through a pandemic which crushed them financially, in many cases, they're still trying to dig out. They probably took on enormous debt, and they're surviving today, but they're still paying off that debt. And they've also had to suffer all this inflation. And so it hasn't been that great for them. So coming on the heels of all this and throwing that at them, the timing isn't ideal, right? So that kind of points to, well, can we do like our Washington elected with social security? Can we kick the can down the road a couple of years, give our businesses and our residents the ability to recover more financially? Well, maybe, but maybe not, because if we do move this a year, now it's 10% higher, now we're at $105 million. If we said two years, now we're at $120 million. What does the franchise fee have to raise to now to be able to absorb that higher cost? So delaying it to make it more affordable now makes it more expensive a year later or two years later. So we don't really gain anything, because we have high borrowing costs, and we have extraordinarily high inflation still in the construction agency or industry. So, you know, this is one of those, I wanted to share these thoughts and talk through this, because if I was a business owner, I would not be thrilled to hear that I'm going to have a huge increase in my utility franchise fee bill. If I'm living on social security, I would not be thrilled about any tax increase, period, levy, franchise fee, doesn't matter. So we have to be very sensitive to who it is that's going to pay for this future building. I will cite, though, as a big fan of franchise fees to fund facilities, as I think the first person, certainly in recent 20 years, to advance this idea, I like this way of funding it, because for those watching that may not realize, a large chunk of properties in the city of Burnsville do not pay property taxes, they're tax-exempt under federal law. And so when you move to a franchise fee base, now every single person, every single resident, every single commercial building, because residents are generally not tax-exempt unless they're running a church out of their house, the commercial buildings that are exempt, the publicly owned buildings, including this building, the school district and others, schools, anybody who is tax-exempt under federal law, is now going to be playing a role in funding what services they actually depend on from the city of Burnsville. Public safety, police and fire, city services, right, which is the rest of the building, streets, maintenance, recreation, finance, building permit, everything is supported by what happens in this building and our other facilities. And so now everybody gets to pay in support of that. That, to me, is fair. The model of going a little higher, commercial, a little lower, I think that's a nuance we can work through. But I'm thrilled that we are having everybody who pays a utility bill, electric and gas, is going to be supporting this project if this were to move forward. So all around, it's not a great time, but it doesn't get any less expensive or less painful if we wait, I think we have to do this. I prefer option three to phase in the franchise fee over two years. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comments? Kara? Vince? Dan G.
I know I've read quite a few reports on construction and building recently, and in some areas, it's 4%, 5% has been the increase the last couple of years in building supplies. I know wood's down about 25% of what it used to be two years ago, as far as cost go. I know there's other things we use besides wood for our buildings, so I don't think we can take 10% as just a natural that that's going to happen that way, because I'm not seeing facts that tell me that right now. But I do agree, the longer we wait, the more it costs, and the more expensive it is. I do like the fact that everybody has utility fees does pay, but we've got to keep in mind that CNI is going to pay 10% of this fee, and that our residents are paying 90% of this fee, and we need to be cognizant of that. And just like our residents pay most of our property taxes in the city as well, and I'm not sure what percentage that is offhand, I'm not sure what percentage of land is CNI and what percentage is residential, but it'd be nice to know as we go forward. So I guess I'm still kind of out on which option I'd want to do yet, until I kind of see some of those things.
Well, I think with the staff need to understand which option you are leaning towards.
I don't know yet. I know it's, I want to do one of these, I was leaning more towards actually number two, but I want to see more how much the residents are paying in all this before I go forward on it. I want to go forward on the project itself, I just want to get a better understanding of all that, what the prices are, who's bearing the brunt of this.
Is there any different information that you want staff to get?
I just like to kind of do a comparison of what our residents pay in property taxes and what they're going to be paying 90% of this as well, you know, where's that even keel? I understand protecting businesses, but I also understand protecting our residents as well.
Mayor, members of the council, so I can say generally, we haven't done the analysis on, let's say, the commercial industrial properties, but under the previous analysis, the franchise fee generally costs the median-valued homeowner about, if I recall, I'm testing my memory here, but it was about $100 less for a median-valued home versus the amount they would pay in the adjusted option number one.
Okay. That's helpful.
It would be, the gap would be a little bigger under option two and option three for residents, because those are only going up by 100% as opposed to 120% in option number one. But option number one was the original one that was compared against the 100% property tax levy increase, and we can give you the exact number, but it was about $100.
Okay. Thank you.
Kara? Vince?
Option two was my preferred between this evening and in our previous discussions about this, based on the facts that Mr. Teinter's provided to us, it seemed to make the most sense to me.
Okay. Kara?
I really do not have a strong preference between any of the three. I do understand that going with option one or option two means that our residents pay less overall, because just like how, you know, when you save money, you're throwing it in and getting interest and all that kind of stuff, so like putting more in earlier is better than smaller amounts over longer periods of time. But I also get that residents are going to have a big sticker shock. However, I think they're going to have a sticker shock no matter what you pick. You know, like I, so I mean, like I get the phasing in and that kind of stuff. I don't know, I think it delays the agony and makes it longer. But I have no strong preference on this.
Yeah, Mayor? I just want to say that I am leaning toward option two.
Okay. I think this is what our staff is asking of us. So I agree with Councilmember Schultz. Kara? One of the things in a phasing in that we experienced from the last time we went through all of this for fire station two and police, the first go-around, was that when we say phase in, people will not trust us, because we're saying, okay, we promised you this and we won't do this. But I remember, after we made the last hike, I said to our business community, we won't touch it for another five years, and we lived up to that. So when we had our meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, that was articulated. And we also talked about, if we don't do this now, it'll never get done because of the cost increases, it's not going to get any cheaper. We've had many experiences, whether it had to do with road construction or anything else that we have done, the more we delay, the more the price tag goes up. So I will, option two gives our residents the lower rate, but at the same time, we'll continue to do the communication that we need to do with our business community. And we've talked a lot about all of this, this is not the first time that we're going down this road, because when we adopted using franchise fees, we had a lot of communication with our residents and with our businesses. But we all know that we have new residents coming into our city, they don't understand what's going on, and we also all know that there's a lot of shifting and changes in our business community with who is the president at some of our businesses, or the shifting within the hospital of who's the vice president that's operating the hospital at this time. So there's a lot of shifts. I like for them to know that we have, here's the rate, and that's what it's going to be, and there's no phasing in, so that they trust our word, just like they understood and did not like the first time around, but they trusted that we said we won't touch it for five years, and we haven't. But here, they also know that we have needs, this building and police need to be updated and expanded to provide the service that our community needs. We're not going to gain anything by delaying, except it will not get done, because the price tag continues to go up. I remember five and 13, we started out with something like $13 and $15 million for that infrastructure, and it ended up to be somewhere between $43 million. That's my concern also about what's going to happen with Nicolet and 13. So for me, we're looking at all of this, we are the stewards of what the people elect us to do with regard to their assets. They need this building, that is their building, that provides services to them, to be upgraded, to be expanded, to meet the needs of the community today. This building was built for 30 years, and it has met what it was designed to do, but we've been really struggling to make things work for our community with this building. And there's been a lot of upgrades and a lot of cost, and we can't continue to do that, that's not being feasible. So staff is asking us, which option is the best? Two is the best for me, because I think option three, when you phase it in, people say, well, you just raised it, but now you're going to raise it again, because they don't remember from time to time. And I don't want them to lose trust in the work that we're doing for them. So from my perspective, I think, well, you have two of us that says two.
I'm saying, I'm leaning two. I'm saying I'm leaning two.
Okay. Because, you know, they need.
I want some more information, but I do want us to go forward too.
Okay. And you want a three.
I like, well, I like the rates of two. I like that rate structure, but I like the phase in of three and the option of the three, number three option that was presented as option one phased in, not option two phased in, correct?
Sorry, can you repeat the question? I was trying to jump ahead to the rates.
Sorry. The option three was a presentation of option one phased in over two years. It wasn't, there wasn't a phase in option of option two, correct?
Option, madam members of the council, option three is a phase in of option two.
Oh, it's a phase in of option two?
Of option two.
Okay. I thought it was, because of the numbers, I thought it was actually adding back up to number one.
I just don't want them to have an increase and then in two years, another increase. I just don't believe that they will trust our work. They're going to say, oh, they're going to increase it again.
Well, I just want to point out, Madam Mayor, built into this plan is a three percent adjustment every year. There's going to be an increase after the initial year of three percent every single year anyway. I'm just saying, let's start the first year not so large and bring it in over two years. And then after that, it's still going to be three percent year over year over year. So, we're not, we're not using a fixed and legal loan model anymore based on the presentation.
No, I understand that. But at least they, they know what the base is.
Yeah.
And that they'll go through that.
Just more sensitive to large increases in one year.
End up being a higher rate at the end of the day.
Yeah. So.
It does because you got to make up for the year, but it still makes it a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
It's all about dosing.
It's still going to end up higher.
Yeah. But it just needs to be done. Okay.
I get to pay it twice.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would just, just quick, like to correct myself earlier. So, I pulled the analysis that we did last year comparing a median valued home and the debt service requirements on a property tax basis versus a one hundred percent franchise fee. Much like we saw in option number one, we're estimating the total cost of the franchise fees to be two hundred and eighty-two dollars. On a median valued home last year, we were estimating the property tax impact of the, all of the projects to be five hundred and thirty dollars. So, essentially a median valued homeowner that was paying the residential rate would save two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. We'll call that two hundred and fifty bucks is essentially what it would cost less for a residential class rate payer that owned a median valued home. Now, the trick with that and something to keep in mind is that everyone, the folks that do own homes own homes of different values. And so, the difference might be more or less depending on, because you may recall from our previous discussion, one of the disadvantages of the franchise fee is that it does not have a inherently a progressive structure to it for residential property owners because we're not making an approximation. The property tax system assumes that the value of your home is commensurate with your ability to pay. And the franchise fee basically assumes everyone's paying the same regardless of what kind of residence they own or occupy. So, two hundred and fifty bucks to answer Councilmember Gubson's question.
So, Kara isn't, she's saying she's agnostic. So, you've got three. I don't, and so, option two is where the majority is landing.
Madam Mayor, members of the council certainly have the majority of the council at alternative two. My question back to the council would be, obviously, this is an iterative process. The intention right now, the direction that we have from the council is to complete design development. We plan to come back to you in August with the completion of design development. To some of the conversation that you all have had this evening and throughout the past twenty-four months, we understand that the longer that we might wait to do this project, the more it might cost or the more it will cost. So, our project timeline calls for the council to make a decision coming out of design development in August. So, that would be the next, that would be the next milestone here. My question for the council tonight, I have clarity on where the majority of the council is on option number two as it's been presented. I've also heard some questions about maybe the need for additional information or additional assessment you might want our team to do either between now and then or now and a time that might be reasonable to come back to you with it. Are there specific additional pieces of information or analysis or assessment that the council would like us to do as we continue to work on the project?
And that's.
And I already asked for that.
Okay. Are you clear with what he's asking for? It's about the.
I don't know that I'm specifically clear with the question.
I just want to be clear on the property tax that is collected, which I know is separate from the fee structure, but I just want to see the impact on residential, residential versus commercial.
So, tonight we talked about kind of the ninety percent mark in terms of residential on fees.
I know that on the fee, but I want to know what the property tax thing is kind of.
He wants to look at a total of what that total burden is going to be.
Certainly, we can, we will look as we do on an annual basis in the budget process in terms of the.
A median house, how much it is.
The burden between residential and commercial.
On the median.
I'll work with our finance team to see if we can get that information ahead of, ahead of the, that budget presentation for you and get back to you with that. Is there any other analysis or assessment that the council wishes us to do as we continue working through this process?
Any, anything else?
I guess one point of clarification, and I know we've talked about this, I don't want to say at length, but as the AIM Center debt rolls off, we are planning on incorporating that into this to some capacity, correct?
Councilmember Workman.
Anecdotally.
Great question. Those, those assumptions and that assessment are worked in to what was presented tonight. What I can say is practically, and Dan did a nice job talking about this this evening, there are both fund balance assumptions and then realities based on that modeling. All three of these options, as you very well saw tonight, provide us with some flexibility in fund balance and the facilities fund that will allow us to make some decisions in the future. So, there are, that's a long way of saying, yes, it's included in this analysis and further, we've built in some flexibility to make some decisions down the road. What we haven't wanted to do is over promise and under deliver in terms of impacts for you, for the community, when it comes to the costs or the assumptions that we've made in, in modeling these, these alternatives and options. Those conversations will be ones that we'll need to have as we continue to refine. Tonight's feedback from you in terms of option number two, that variable increase across all classes and the impacts that that has on residential versus commercial, that direction will be helpful, helpful for us as we continue to narrow some of the answers to those questions. I'm rambling on now, but I think one of the other points that is important to remember is we're using a hundred million dollar assumption kind of at the highest level of this modeling right now. The schematic design cost estimates for the Police City Hall project are at about ninety-three point five million dollars, just a little shy of that point. We'll actually get design development cost estimates this week. We have a meeting with our project partners on Thursday where we'll see updated numbers based on the design, design development work to this point in time. When it comes to those conversations between now and August, we'll start to be able to narrow, the direction tonight, we'll start to be able to narrow the assumptions that we're making and be a bit more specific to get to better estimates as we get through the process. So, that information will come along with our upcoming conversations and it is our intention, these numbers won't go up, they'll come down, is essentially the summary version.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there anything else? So, City Manager Lindberg, you've got every, everything that you need?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council. We have the majority of the council's preference and some direction this evening that will help us to continue to narrow the conversation. We'll get the information that's been requested tonight to you as soon as we can. Just give me a little bit of time to talk to the team and make sure we get that to you in a meaningful way.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Well done, as always. And thank you for always helping to educate us as we go through our study sessions with all of you on all of these very complicated issues.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, happy to do it. It's always a joy. I'm, as unsurprised, I'm a total geek for all this stuff, so I just enjoy it.
Thank you.
It's also, it's also nice to let you know what kind of batteries you ought to be buying.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to move on. This has been a very good discussion and staff has what they want. The next item on our agenda this evening is participatory budget pilot program. And presenting is Bethany Brewer, our Strategic Initiative Director. City Manager Lindberg, you have words that you would like to give us?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will keep it brief. As you're all aware, we've been working on building a pilot program for our participatory budgeting project. Bethany's taking the lead on the staff side in helping our team manage through that project. Our intention tonight is to follow up on our last conversation where we had committed to you that we would bring back a menu of options and some additional consideration for your feedback so you can help us to further inform our work. The next milestone of this project would be a September work session discussion where we would bring back the formalized pilot program for your review, introduction to the community, and then from there, kind of continue on working on a project timeline that Bethany will share with you tonight. So, with that, I don't know that I was brief, but at least it was an introduction. I'll turn it over to Bethany to walk through the menu of options that we have in front of you and get some feedback really on five or six questions to help us continue to the work forward.
Okay. Bethany?
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here talking with you this evening again about our participatory budgeting pilot program. It's been as Greg since September fifth, twenty twenty-three, when we spoke about it last at the end of the governance conversation with the city council where you directed us to move forward with a participatory budgeting pilot program focused on neighborhoods. So, our project team internally, it's most of the same team that worked through the governance process on things like the white paper, has been meeting again since then to work on developing a pilot program. And really, the, the conversation this evening, the intention is, as Greg said, to provide a menu of options to the city council that we are looking for your feedback on as we continue to finalize development of the pilot program. So, my plan tonight is to, as Greg mentioned, kind of walk through the outline of the pilot program, the five questions that we have for you for feedback, and then kind of go through the five and then I'll swing back to the five questions so we can talk through your feedback on those things as we go. So, really, when we, when our staff team took a look at developing a pilot program focused on neighborhoods, we really realized that a substantial investment of, of time in the pilot program would be spent on, need to be spent on defining and organizing neighborhoods. So, we put together a five, a four step pilot program here or are proposing a four step pilot program that really focuses on first defining neighborhoods. We think about neighborhoods as geographically near home communities and that definition or what someone might identify as their neighborhood is really going to vary widely, right, from person to person, from community to community. And so, first, depending on, right, our community in Burnsville, there's going to be some time spent on defining what determines a neighborhood boundary, how those near home communities look to the different, the different neighborhoods in, in Burnsville. So, time spent in defining neighborhoods and then organizing them, right? So, creating that identity, making sure we're investing in developing neighborhood leaders. There's going to be time spent there. And then the next step of the, the pilot would really be in convening neighborhoods. So, from a staff perspective, helping to assist or facilitate neighborhoods and gathering to brainstorm their needs. Really, those neighborhoods are going to know what their needs are. So, the, the idea there would be that staff would take an assistant or supportive role in helping neighborhoods to convene and think about what their needs are, ultimately to facilitate a neighborhood grant program where neighborhoods can submit an application to the city council for selection to fund projects that are important to the neighborhood and are of their area of interest and what they'd like to see done and funded through their neighborhood. That's really the structure of the program that we're proposing or that staff have put together here based on city council direction back in September. Looking at just a timeline as we think about how this would move through the next year and how do we facilitate the processes, following, as Greg mentioned, final kind of introduction of the program or entered a final direction for the program in September, the idea would be that we define neighborhoods kind of through the fall of this year into early winter. So, spending some time, again, helping to determine what those neighborhood boundaries are in Burnsville. And then in the spring, organizing, right, spending that time gathering neighborhoods, helping to support leaders of those areas in the spring of next year, working through that convening process, right, helping neighborhoods to gather and think about what their needs are through the summer. And then looking at that neighborhood grant program in the fall of twenty twenty-five, that's when neighborhoods could actually present what their, what their projects are and then be selected for funding. And then like any good program, we want to, because we're looking at a pilot program, we obviously want to spend some time with the city council and staff in evaluating how that went right through the winter, thinking right into next year, following kind of the funding of those, those projects in the fall of twenty twenty-five. So, really evaluating what went well, what our plan is moving forward. So, that's what we're looking at for a timeline. As we think about that four piece pilot program, there's really five questions that we're interested, we need council feedback on to can finalize the, the program. So, we based all of our context to you on the research from obviously our white paper and a lot of research that our staff teams have done into what do we really need to know to make a great, successful program? And so, you'll see we've proposed some options in each one of these areas and that's certainly where we're looking for your feedback as we move forward. So, starting with kind of our first question is how do we determine neighborhood boundaries? So, how are we going to, how create that identity, create those boundaries for folks in neighborhoods? Based on our research into neighborhood sizes and just our understanding of Burnsville and some work we've done with community engagement in the city, in the city clerk's office and those types of things, we anticipate up to seventy neighborhoods in Burnsville that likely would we try to define then and create, create that identity for. Obviously, you all know some, some neighborhoods in Burnsville already define themselves. Some, right, are, we don't have that, that definition. And so, we anticipate that up to seventy neighborhoods. And certainly, as we think about what the options are for accomplishing that, staff could pull out a map and help determine those neighborhood boundaries with some community input and can staff take the lead on that definition. Alternatively, option two, right, the community could define their neighborhoods with some staff input and support. So, we anticipate that option might take some more time and we, as we're looking at the timeline, if we're kind of letting the community lead that process, there'd likely be some additional work into that process, but certainly some options for that we're looking for your feedback on. When we think about our advisory group, our, our project team of staff have been working together, like I said, through, since the governance process, we have an operational project team that will continue to work together to implement a successful program. When we think about who might be advising, right, creating some guidelines and establishing some vision and clarity for what, evaluating success, right? That's what we think about in an advisory group. Certainly, the city council could serve as that advisory group to staff. Alternatively, an option two could be to, to use the community as advisors, right? So, again, there if we're adding community to the advisory group, likely some time spent there, obviously recruiting the community to that and investing in getting them up to speed and started in the process. So, would likely add a little time to the timeline. But again, just some options that we're looking for your feedback on. Another question we'll have for you is how will we fund the grants? So, we think about the grant funding source, that's the dollars that are actually going to fund the projects in neighborhoods that would actually be awarded through the grant application process. We've, through our research, really found that separating funding for grants from essential service is important and to that end have recommended a few options here for funding the grants. So, through our research, using the EDA as a funding source is an option here. Something for the city council to know and consider is that in this case, funds are limited to physical improvements that enhance the neighborhood. So, there does provide a little bit of limit and boundary to what the, the grants can fund if we use the EDA. But another option to consider is the sale of surplus property. In this case, we do anticipate some surplus property funding potential in the near future. And so, grants in this case, it has a little bit less limit to what can be used for. So, grant funds are limited to public purpose criteria only. It potentially opens up the opportunity for grants to be used for relationship building and things like that, gathering in a neighborhood versus all physical improvements. Grant investment is the, that amount that we're actually investing in the grants. The, in our scan, the median investment was, the median investment for communities, right? We, we, in our environmental scan, looked at twenty-nine communities throughout the world that were operating participatory budgeting programs. And in that case, was about zero point six, point zero six seven percent of their budget was dedicated to participatory. their budget was dedicated to participatory investment. And in Burnsville terms, that's about $100,000, the mean, and I apologize, there's an extra zero in this presentation, it should be 0.067% was the median, 0.13% was the average. So in that case, about $200,000 in Burnsville terms, thinking about that. So we took those numbers, certainly as some options to present to the city council to consider. Funding option one would be up to $100,000, which would be grants up to 5,000 per neighborhood or up to 20 grants as an option. Option two, if we took that more average number up to $200,000, that could be grants up to $10,000 per neighborhood, up to 20 grants, based on our understanding of likely participation and those sorts of things from our research. Certainly, those are just options we've shared. The city council has more opportunity to influence that or, or add additional options to that mix. Last one, operational investment. So how will fund program administration? This one, a question, certainly we anticipate based on our research and putting the program together, anticipate about 2,500 to 3,500 staff hours to, to manage the program. So that includes a project manager type position that, that is implementing the program and then support from community engagement, community development, finance, the leadership team, things like that. So those staff hours. And then about 30,000 to 50,000 in expenditures when we think about investing in defining neighborhoods, advertising, communicating with the community, gathering the community, some expenditures. So in this case, we'd be looking for council feedback about how to fund those administrative parts of the program. So option would be to potentially reallocate staff resources and expenditures in the budget, or option two, to allocate new, some new additional resources to develop, manage, and implement the program. So in the case that we, that council would provide feedback to go with option one and reallocating staff and expenditures, staff would come back and have conversation with council about what reallocation would look like potentially, right? What would be, would the 2,500 to 3,500 hours cover elsewhere or come off elsewhere depending on your feedback? So that's background on the five questions we're proposing. As Greg mentioned, our next steps will be to finalize the pilot program based on your feedback and then come back to you with a final plan on, on September work session. But unless, they're certainly open to any questions, but I wanted to, to pause here because I'll just, I'm going to walk through these questions if that's okay and get your insights on, on each one of those. So that's my plan here. And again, happy to answer any questions, but Mayor and Council wondering first if we can start with neighborhoods and your feedback on how we determine neighborhood boundaries.
Bethany, on the 2,500 to 3,500 hours?
Yeah.
That's staff would put on this, do we have a cost associated with that?
We do, yes. If we take a look at just the total staff costs, so we use an average level kind of position in our, in our compensation structure, and when we factor in those hours for staff, it's a total, the 2,500 to 3,500 of the staff cost would be about 170,000 to 240,000 for like the, an average staff cost. And then when, obviously, that's, then the expenditures would potentially be on top of that.
Did you say 170 to 240?
170 to 240 is the staff, the potential program cost above that, 30 to 50, kind of we put that range at about 200,000.
So around 200,000?
Yep, 200 to 300, yep.
Okay, and is that just for startup or is that ongoing?
That's, that would be for the year. So that would be about one year of.
So every year we'd have that expense?
Depending on, of course, how, how the program would evolve following a pilot program.
Okay.
So, Mayor. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, I think, I think it's important, first, just clarity, our estimates are about the pilot program moving forward. So those, those estimates are what we think, both based on our research and as we've talked as a team, what we believe the general investment of staff hours would be. And we're making some broad assumptions there to Bethany's point about what those costs might look like in terms of, of the estimate of 200,000 to $290,000 on operating costs. Again, the question there in terms of what the feedback that we need from you tonight is, is how you wish us to, to manage that investment, right? We presented the two options of essentially suggesting that we reallocate resources, and in that case, would come back to you and we'd have a service level conversation about where we find those hours, or an alternative of we find other funding or new funding to, to support the, the pilot program administration. So could be a combination of those things, could be a completely different path. Again, from our perspective, administrative cost and, and covering that investment is, is part of the feedback that we're looking for tonight so we can build up a final program.
One quick follow-up. And that would be then where we end up with what kind of grants, or we could do that, could add another 100,000 to 200,000 a year to this program, which would bring us to anywhere from 3,000 to 500,000? Is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, certainly you're prerogative in terms of the amount of grant, you know, that grant investment. So the, the 2,000 to 290,000 that Greg and I were just mentioning is the operational investment, the, the grant investment would be on top of that, again, of course, depending on your feedback.
And I would also, and I think Bethany mentioned this, but I would also underscore that all of the assumptions that we're making in the context that we were provided is purely based on, on white paper research and how we've applied that research to think about how do we make this work from a project team perspective? And we're trying to stick pretty true to the, the data that we found. So the two investments that we've talked about, really since the governance process, since the white paper, have been your investment in what I'm going to call the actual participatory budgeting element, in this case, the grant number. We've suggested two options, 100,000 based on, and that again is based on what Bethany was talking about, that, that percentage across all of our studied cities that have done the work before, or up to $200,000, which actually gets to the mean or the middle number of the, those study results. So that's how we came up with those two options. Again, it's the council's feedback that ultimately will determine how much that participatory amount is, and then based on your feedback, how we would cover the program administration, which is the kind of the second bucket of funding to be discussed.
Well, the funding that you're proposing is either EDA or new money through the sale of property. From my perspective, we have been robbing the EDA fund, and we need to grow that fund for all of the economic development initiatives that is already on the table, and we haven't seen the economic development study that's being done right now by STANTEC. And what we need to do and how much money that's going to help us to make sure that we address all of that. So you have shared with us that we have so many properties that we can sell, and then that's new money that would fund, I would think, fund this program as we move forward because we cannot use general fund money to fund this pilot project. And if we went to the general fund, it would be about Jenny, about a percent of the budget? When you go, if you're going to go for 200, 250, you're, you're looking at a percent?
About a half.
A half a percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mayor, members of the council, question, I'm going to get screwed up on my question numbers here, Bethany.
Number one, yeah.
Question number three was about grant funding source, Mayor, to your point.
Yeah.
The direction that we had heard from the council, and based on our research, suggested that, research suggested that generally speaking, general fund dollars have been less effective given a, a number of different factors that we've talked about from a white paper perspective. We also, from a staff perspective, we thought that we heard coming out of the governance process last September, that the council was not as interested, based on that, based on, based on research, in using general fund dollars. So we took research in the council's direction and suggested the two options of EDA funding, which is, to Bethany's point earlier, far more restricted, frankly, on what we can use those funds for or what grant receivers could use those funds for. And we think that there's some challenges there. It's workable, but some challenges. That's where we identified as part of the project team and the, and the staff side of things, the idea of using sale of surplus plus property, those dollars would be treated more like general fund dollars. They would be less restricted in terms of the, the source of those funds, allowing more flexibility for neighborhoods and grant recipients. So we didn't suggest the general fund as a funding source based on our research, and that would be the, the staff position on that item. The council could certainly discuss doing it, it would just require a, a different conversation as we build out the program.
Because one of the things in reading budget programs have been funded, a lot of them like Oakland, Lansing, Michigan, and also what you had sent us from Nashville were ARPA funds. And it's a lot of these huge, big cities that received huge tranches of ARPA funds, and they pulled some of that aside and used those funds to look at participatory budget aspects of all of this. So, and we don't have that. And all of our ARPA funds, Jenny, if I'm correct, are all spent. We have none.
We have.
And we bought down a levy with part of our ARPA fund.
Yes, over three years. 2024 will be our funding year.
So I, I think one of the things is, you know, you have, who determines the boundaries? I mean, I've walked this city. I have walked this city many times. And you're right, there are a lot of neighborhoods. And yet, even in, I can, I can use Vincennes Neighborhood as one. North River Hills is so different down where Vince lives from the people who live on the side where Sky Oaks is. They, that's one neighborhood, and they see themselves as Sky Oaks, North River Hills. When you come further on south, you all see yourselves differently, and I don't know if you see yourselves more to the park side of things and define your neighborhood that way or, or what. And it's the same thing in South River Hills. The people north of 13 in South River Hills don't see themselves as South River Hills, south of, of, not 13, Cliff Road. So to your point, you can say South River Hills, but then people say, are you meaning South River Hills, north of Cliff or south of Cliff?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council, definitely.
And then there's a small group that looks at themselves as Red Oak in South River Hills, but they define themselves with regard to the park.
Definitely, and I would say, sorry, I was going to say that's part of the reason for the question, right, is do we want, who do we want to help make those definitions? And I think the important.
And you know, if you ask the community, they will give you a lot of different, it's like.
Absolutely. And I think the, the time and the investment in defining the boundaries is really an investment in this program, certainly, right? The, the.
You know, I don't know.
Getting folks involved in that, I think is, is important in understanding their needs, that, that near-home need is.
And I don't know what Councilmember Schultz would think, but, you know, if this is engaging the community, then I would like to see the neighborhood define themselves, not us.
I don't disagree with that. I think there's some neighborhoods that we can automatically define because they're in an HOA.
Like.
Okay, so if a neighborhood is in an HOA.
You're a whole different community where you are in Walden than, than Walden on a single-family area, but you're all Walden.
No, we are not all Walden.
I know that.
We are an HOA.
Yeah.
The single-family homes are a different HOA.
HOA, yeah. But they're all called Walden when they were developed.
True, however, I think it's pretty easy if, if a group is in an HOA, they are a neighborhood. Like, that is a neighborhood. So those are ones where staff can define that neighborhood. It doesn't take a lot of back and forth on that, because those are legally defined entities, right? So, and we actually have a fair number of HOAs all through Burnsville.
Burnham Wood is an HOA?
Yeah, so we, we have those set. Now, outside of HOAs, yeah, I think it would be great to have residents involved in.
Defining.
Who, who, what do they think is a, is a neighborhood? When we were at the Minnesota League of Cities meeting, one of the presentations was talking about how cities are now using technology to let people define their neighborhood and then further, take it a step further, define what should their neighborhood look like? And they actually had AI-assisted visuals where people could drag and drop or type in what, what they want. And they were defining it as one minute. So whereas we used to talk about 15-minute cities, now they're talking about one-minute neighborhoods. So absolutely, I, I think where it's already a legal entity, that, like, that's a done deal. Outside of that, it would be, in my opinion, I would like to have community involvement in that. That's just my personal opinion. I don't know what you all think on number one. Where are you guys sitting at for number one?
Yeah, because I, I agree, if you're going to be.
Yeah.
If, if, if you're an HOA, yes.
Done deal.
Yeah, but, but the others, because we went through this some years back, I think in the late 90s, trying to define neighborhoods because it was part of our strategic plan.
Well, what would be interesting is.
But everybody defined it differently, and the thing is, you have to ask the people.
We do, and we actually have some fantastic opportunities coming up to do that because we do night to unite, and people are defining themselves in a neighborhood for night to unite. And we may be able to use night to unite later, like, the next year. That might be the perfect opportunity for us to physically go out and we talk to the neighborhoods and present this. That puts it on a longer timetable than what staff has presented, but it's something that occurs already naturally that may give us a leg up. And since we're going out already into these neighborhoods who have self-defined, that might be a good opportunity for us to have our face-to-face with these, with these neighborhoods. But that would just be my suggestion, but I don't know. What do you guys think on the neighborhood situation?
I mean, because your, your, your neighborhood too is very different.
Oh, I can go over Leisure Lane, and it's one neighborhood, and Lakota's another neighborhood altogether. There's 290-some houses in my neighborhood, and it's, and they are distinctly different, no doubt. I think I'd have a hard time deciding what neighborhood is. That's when I heard 70, I thought, okay, we've got only so many precincts, but we don't look at precincts as a neighborhood, that's precincts where people vote, and so there's many neighborhoods within a precinct, and so that's, that's.
Vince?
It's going to take some time.
What are your thoughts on me?
Well, you know, when I'm thinking about North River Hills again, and, you know, 70 could be incredibly small number. You know, I think about my block, and I live in a horseshoe with a road through and a couple of cul-de-sacs, and I think my neighborhood would say that that's our neighborhood. And then there's a cul-de-sac in between that, Land and Court, and they would probably call themselves, you know, a neighborhood. You know, the homes that lie in the park, but then each of them have their own, you know, you know, and then Black Dog has got its own.
That's right, you're right, Black Dog.
I think if we're going to do it, we have to be somewhat rigid on how that's going to be defined, otherwise we could end up with 500 neighborhoods, neighborhoods. You know, precincts, I think, could probably be the easiest starting point, but then how do you, how do you, that, you know, precinct one, North River Hills again, is massive. I think it's our biggest precinct, so how do you have that many people come together and agree on a $5,000 grant? I don't think you do.
Yeah.
And I think part of why we wanted to go with this particular way was we wanted the, the side benefit of strengthening our neighborhoods as neighborhoods and getting Of strengthening our neighborhoods as neighborhoods and getting our neighbors to get to know one another. And be able to interact with one another and have that expertise, which we don't have, but they have. Because they live there on what their neighborhood is like and what it needs. So, but I agree, we don't want five hundred neighborhoods. So, just like Dan said, like a hybrid approach might be what we're looking for here.
I live in a large neighborhood, there's nineteen homes.
And we would do with.
And you're an HOA, so you would be a neighborhood.
You'd build something to bring everybody together.
Yeah.
So Mayor and Council, believe it or not, we've had very long and intense staff conversations on neighborhoods.
Don't say.
You don't say. When you start a conversation and say, hey, how do we simply do this, it gets complicated. It's why it's one of the five questions. What I'm generally hearing from the council is a desire to let the community.
Yeah, define themselves.
Some structure to define neighborhoods, kind of in that hybrid approach. We have talked, staff has talked about the HOA or the legally defined. I think there's, there are some challenges there that we've talked through as staff. Heart of the City is maybe a good example or a kind of a good near home example. There are many defined HOAs that are very close to one another. And we'll have to work through kind of some of that nuance, and I think feedback from the community will help us do that. I'll be honest, I walked into to a meeting with the project team just to talk about neighborhoods, thinking, ah, this is easy. And then we made it really complicated. So I think getting some of that feedback will be helpful, but perhaps putting some structure to that feedback process. To Councilmember Schultz's point, staff's estimating that the timeline that was put in front of you at the beginning of this presentation. Probably extends by about six months to allow us to do that work. Again, I think Night to Unite's a great suggestion.
I like the Night to Unite.
Giving us some time.
And we can start.
And it strengthens Night to Unite.
And we can start that conversation just by talking to people this year.
Yeah.
And then.
Love it.
Bethany, how many block captains do we have for Night to Unite, just as an example?
Eighty-two block captains for Night to Unite.
How many?
Yes, eighty-two.
Eighty-two block captains for Night to Unite. It was one of the numbers we tossed around and talking.
Eighty-two.
Currently, there were, last year, there was eighty-two block captains.
And and we have, and we have good participation in that.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's something we can be really proud of.
I do think in general, like going back to the research, and and again, it's just research. But based on on research, we would anticipate with our geography, our population, that seventy neighborhood number. Kind of fits the average of what the research data showed us. So that's where we established at least that starting point for. Kind of understanding what it might look like across the community.
Thank you.
So that, does that help that we start to look at, in Night to Unite, which is about three or four weeks away? I think three weeks away already.
Metamare members of the council, I I can't commit that it would happen this year.
No, 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 but just when we're out and about, just, I just like to talk to people and say, hey. How do you define, because going into Summit Oaks, I can tell you, when I go into Summit Oaks. We meet in one big area and they're an HOA also. I think they're an HOA.
Yeah, they have control.
But the the other thing is that going into Crystal Lake, hey, that's really different. The south side and the north side of Crystal Lake are very different. Maple Island like to be Maple Island. They don't see themselves as. They don't see themselves as part of Blueville Bay and the other.
They're great neighbors.
Or or on the, or on the, or on the north side, or on the north side of of Crystal Lake. So even, I think, just going out and having conversations with people this year, gathering information is a.
And Mayor, I hear you, and for as much as I would like to commit to be able to do that. Resources are a real consideration here. I want our team to be able to focus on.
I understand that.
Building a pilot program and coming back to you and and being intentional about our communication. And we can do our best to try to figure out how we might do that this year, but it's gonna be a tight turnaround for.
Not asking you to do that, but when I'm out at at Night to Unite, I can always say, hey, how do you define yourself?
It's the, it's the old.
Information gathering, not not anything.
Slow is smooth, smooth is fast.
Take your time and do it right first.
This is how I'm looking at this.
You touched on, somebody touched on a point, we've had a large turnover of new residents. And so historically, how we may have defined ourselves, you know, new residents might not have a clue how that's defined because they just got here.
And you're right, because we have a whole lot of new residents.
You know.
Yeah.
The concept of North and South River Hills might not even be front of mind for a lot of new people, so.
Mayor Council, thank you for the feedback on number, on our question number one, very helpful as we continue on. If I could, number two question was about our advisory group. So who potentially would be providing?
I would say residents. We say, we want them to participate, residents, not us.
If we do it, yeah.
We say it's participatory.
I'm not convinced right at the moment, we should do it, so just so you know.
I get it, with the with the cost, it depends on how we're gonna fund it.
The amount of money that we're talking about, if we put that into some existing things, I think we'd have better impact. And I I could get concerned about staff time on this thing. I could get concerned about the cost of up to half a million dollars a year to do this thing. And I think we can, we have some existing programs in place already. If we want to get into our neighborhoods, we can do that. Without without having to put up new program together again. I, we do great outreach in this community. We have Ava out there all the time. We have our party on the plazas. We have Night to Unite. We have all kinds of ways that we do outreach to our community and get them involved. And so, right now, I'm, I got excited about it at one point when I realized we were gonna focus on neighborhoods. But when I take a look at this money and if we took that same money and just put it into the neighborhoods to to help out with redevelopment of the neighborhoods. And and help the seniors age in place and look at some of our homes that need a lot of help. I think we'd have a better impact for our community as a whole. And so, I will say now, I'm actually a no vote on this. I will remain a no vote on it.
I think you're you're asking for some feedback.
Yes.
On the project team. Now you know that we say neighborhoods. We still don't know where the grant money is going to come from.
Correct.
So that's part of the discussion to come.
Correct.
Because, you know, I don't want to use EDA funds. We've got too many things going on for, to use EDA funds.
I, I, to me, this is an EDA fund project.
It's what?
I think it's an EDA funded project.
I'm, so I'm, I'm open to multiple funding for the grant. I'm fine with EDA, I'm fine with parcels to sell. I'm also fine with looking for outside grants. To help fund this, looking at some of the, some of the grant categories for the Knight Foundation. These look like good fits within those as well.
The McKnight?
Yes. And since this is something that is. You know, is more groundbreaking, the the chance of grant award is actually higher. Also being able to show the impact, because a lot of these grants, what they're looking at is not just, you know. Are you putting funds into the community? But more and more of them are looking for components of, is this citizen driven? Is this resident driven? Do they have the power and the authority on this? Are you shifting that over to them? Are you getting the information from them? So I would also, and I know that's not one of them in there because that's something, if you get it, you get it, and you can't rely on it. And that's why you don't have that in there. But I do think that there are good chances for that type of funding to be brought in.
Well, we also have some land that we can sell.
I'm good selling land.
Which goes to the EDA when it's sold, correct?
No, because there's, there's two. If we have EDA, if there are EDA land, then it goes to EDA fund. But there is some of our land.
I can let Jenny respond to.
Yeah, so any, any parcels that are EDA owned at the county would go directly to the EDA fund. Those that are city owned typically have gone to city funds designated by the council.
I'll vote hybrid then.
No, well, it's, it's new money, but it's, it's, so I would take that money that is city owned land. And put it into.
Doesn't the EDA fund only allow you to do structural type things?
Jenny or Jeff, which one of you wishes to take the answer to that question?
So Mayor and Council, we did have our EDA attorney kind of write an opinion on this, and so we have that background. But yes, generally, the statute isn't written such that there's like enumerated things that this can be used for. So which is why we provided the general summary, that it's, to use the order, the the statute language, it's about both eliminating blight. And preventing blight, and so that's why we summarized it as physical investments in neighborhoods that, or physical investments that. That enhance the neighborhood, right? Because that's kind of a general summary. Things like social capital building or education type things, those wouldn't qualify, kind of directly, in the opinion of our EDA attorney.
And that's what I thought, it's just, the fund is for enhancement and redevelopment of blighted property.
And from a staff perspective, when we recognize that there would be limitation based on our EDA council's opinion. We felt that it was important to present an option to the council that would perhaps alleviate some of those limitations. Which is where the idea, the concept of option two came into play, which was the the sale of surplus property. It just so happens that we have identified current surplus property that may be on the table for sale. We're still working through that. The council's still has to make some decisions. We are also doing a fairly extensive study of city owned property. And part of that will be clearly identifying what we mean by surplus property and what parcels are actual surplus property. We plan to bring that capital study, that asset study back to the council for discussion that could be an ongoing source here. So there were some moving parts from a staff perspective that rose this idea to the top as an option presented to you. Councilmember Schultz makes a great suggestion, and we've discussed other, perhaps more creative sources of funding. Grants included, the complexities and the the current staff investment in grants was a reason. That didn't make it to the top two options, doesn't mean that based on your feedback tonight, we can't explore that more, right? That's what this conversation was intended to be. I also would just remind the council that we've tried to keep this feedback as outcomes oriented as possible. And I would just encourage the council to help us do that, right?
Yes.
Help us to be outcomes focused in this conversation, so we can come back to you with a program for your, for your feedback and introduction to the community. That really meets the outcomes that you're establishing, so just an encouragement there too.
Okay. So there's a lot of options for looking at how we, this is funded. So, and we don't know what that is, so your other one is how, what's the amount? Well, we don't know that because we don't have all of the information. And, and then how will we fund the program administration? You know, is that going to come from grant funding, sale of property, et cetera?
So Mayor and Council, if we could stick on question three for a minute, if you remember, that option was about grant funding sources. We've suggested EDA or sale of surplus property. I've heard some other suggestions tonight, which might indicate to me that perhaps some more work is needed here. On the staff side of things to inform the the council's feedback. But what I am hearing, or what I haven't heard, is renewed interest in general fund dollars as an option. So we're, we're, we still remain narrow on on kind of following what we had talked about from September. But perhaps some more work that staff needs to put in.
Yeah.
For the council to feel kind of comfortable. From a grant funding source perspective.
Well, I'm, I'm not in favor of using EDA funds. We can use grant funds and sale of property, but not EDA funds.
What's the rest of the council feel about EDA funds?
Vince?
You're a no.
Yeah, I'm a no, you know that.
Yeah, he already said no, so I don't know what Vince is.
So we, in our last budget, bolstered the EDA because we wanted to be more competitive. And redevelopment. And so I'm, I'm very cautious about, you know, I think we've had a couple of different conversations about utilizing EDA for various things. And it's starting to feel like we're spending it before we've accrued it. So I'm not throwing anything off the table, but I'm very hesitant to just jump in and start utilizing EDA funds. When we haven't even begun, you know, what we are trying to do with that program. So I'm not saying no, 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 but I'm, I'd like to explore other options before. And I'm kind of with Dan G over here, I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to this, but this is creeping up to a half a million dollars. You know, and the white paper, we had a one percent participat- participation rate. And so I, you know, I'm just trying to see the the big picture here. I'd be more interested in trying to get some initial community feedback. On is there an interest in this before we get too far into building a program? Are people wanting to do this? Before we even start talking about how are we gonna pay for it?
I think the incentive is, when you put out there that there's an opportunity to get some dollars. To make improvements in their neighborhoods, that's when you're gonna see engagement. On the front end, it's all like, oh, you want another survey, you want feedback, you want. There isn't anything tangible to measure by, but when we get to that point where they're involved and this is what is out there as an option. I I think we'll get a lot more, a lot more. Because that, everyone's got something they want to do in their neighborhood to improve it. There's, there's houses that actually need improving in a, in a neighborhood. But this is broader than that because we have a program for individual properties.
And so, and the question that had come up, at least in some of my check-ins, was, you know, okay, so we do this for the first year. Neighborhood A fixes their monument sign that they wanted to get done, that's done. And then year two, are they, you know, then are we just kind of circling, trying to figure out how to spend this money? And then what, you know, are you, are you seeking, are you seeking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist? And then, are, you know, going a little bit farther, you know, probably won't cause major problems. But then are we creating an opportunity where you've got neighbors, you know, butting heads? Because this guy thinks we should do it with this money, that, you know what I mean? And so I'm just trying to think through the initial new car smell of this and. The long term implications.
So I think when you're, when you're looking at it and you're wondering, first of all, will, will people want to do this? When, when you do talk to people about, hey, if there is a grant program that you could apply for. And you've been clamoring for this thing to happen in your neighborhood and it hasn't happened. And now you could make that happen and you would have the ability to make that happen, do you want that? Most people are gonna, gonna say yes on that. Yeah, they, they would like the opportunity to do that. And most people know their neighborhood better than we know their neighborhood. And they know the needs for their neighborhood better than than we do. As for, are we looking for, looking, presenting a solution for problems that don't exist? If there aren't any problems, people aren't going to apply for the grants. If people aren't applying for the grants, you're not giving the money out. I don't see that we're going to have that problem. What I do think is we're going to have people who are gonna need to learn how to talk with their neighbors. Decide, okay, is this something we need? Those are things that we want our residents to do. We want them to be talking and interacting with one another and coming up with solutions together. Rather than us decreeing what happens. Rather than us decreeing what happens and you take it or you don't take it. Is there a learning curve to it? Yeah, there is, but that's the good part of it. That's not the negative of it. That's the good part. If you don't incentivize, if you don't incentivize this type of behavior and you punish this type of behavior, you know, what do you get more of? So, you know, that's part of what we're looking to do. I do think it will be extremely interesting when residents are going through and saying, okay, what are the parameters? How do we write this grant? You know, what is the best thing for our neighborhood? And I do think about the conversations that people will have about what ideas they have. I absolutely know they have ideas that we've never even thought of, never even considered. And some of them might be off the wall and just not doable, and in which case the grant is not awarded. But I think a lot of them are going to be incredible. We just have to give our residents the opportunity. And that's what we're looking to do, is, is to give our residents the opportunity to have some control of their destiny in their neighborhood.
Well, and Karen, that's why I see like this has the potential to be something bigger than just what it is, because you are giving neighbors an opportunity to come together and build community. And I don't see this question on the list, but are we providing a menu of options that this can be spent on? Or is this just going to be an inbound, hey, we want to turn our cul-de-sac island into a, a fire pit? And that's what we want to use our money on and then.
BJ would be super excited about that.
Yeah.
But you know what I mean, like.
But you know, back in the early 2000s, we did grants to beautify neighborhoods. And what they all came around and said, well, we have, we live in a cul-de-sac. So they used the money, every neighborhood did it differently. And then we went out and, and raided all the different islands that they invested money in. And we had a big to-do about all of that. So that's when we went and we looked at their gardens and all of that. But a lot of neighborhoods designed their, the, the islands and put up trees or flowers or a fire pit with benches, you know, but it was theirs. But it was, it was around all of those islands.
Yeah.
I think the question that you're asking will actually be answered by number two, which is who provides guidance to the operational project team? And we've said, okay, well, we want residents to help with that. So they're going to be helping to come up with what those parameters are.
And absolutely, and Mayor Council, to, to add to that, I think it also a little bit is dependent on the answer to number three as well, right? Certainly, we did as staff put to, you know, do some research on what are the types of projects that might be done and how much might they cost as part of the potential for a program? And so we have some idea, and then I think to, to your point, so that wasn't presented here because of the fact that we're still answering some of these higher level questions. But to Councilmember Schultz's point, certainly as the guidelines are established or the funding sources are established, some ideas could potentially be shared, right? Just for, for context and things like that. And then certainly.
We also had grants for rain gardens. And all around, Crystal Lake was where a lot of those.
Sure. Yep, natural shoreline conversion.
All, all of those, those were grants and neighborhoods came together. And that whole neighborhood around Crystal Lake on this, on the north side, all put in rain gardens. And they, that came out of grants because they were all focused on the environment, just like we are. And that's the premise of where that came from. It was about our environment and our natural resources. And so there were grants for rain garden, there were grants for removing invasive species around the lakes and all of that. But those are some of the things that we did. Mark, do we, did we put in a grant for some of the people around Early Lake to clean up some of the invasive species around there? Because I remember we did one once, but I don't remember, we did this recently.
Mayor and Members of Council, so the city has allocated some stormwater funding for residents to have private grants, do projects on their own, their own property to support stormwater quality.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But it's all on the environmental piece. And there are a lot of our residents who are very environmentally focused.
Correct. There has to be a link to stormwater quality.
Yeah.
Mayor Council, thank you very much for the feedback. I think just to touch on question number four briefly. Certainly, I know the mayor mentioned.
Five thousand dollars back in the early 2000s. I don't know whether that's going to do it today with the cost of plant material and all of that. I don't know if five thousand is going to make it. And I remember those rain gardens, they, some of the people got big rocks because I went and looked at all of those rain gardens around there. They were beautiful, but hmm.
Absolutely, and that's definitely, you know, one of the reasons we presented a variety of options there. Certainly, council's prerogative, looking for your feedback on possible amounts, right? Possible amount for that grant investment and what you might be interested in for potential as we finalize the program.
Well, and the mayor brings up a good point. We do have some other grant type programs that are used in neighborhoods and perhaps those are rolled in under this umbrella so that things are more cohesive.
Yeah.
And so that we don't have them like in different spots. Maybe, maybe bring them into this program so it's more cohesive. As for the amount we're investing in grants, again, I'm very flexible on that. I don't have a strong preference on this. This is a pilot program. It's something that you want to start with more modestly. And then you want to take a look at it and look at how you want to adjust it for the following year.
I'm gonna, just, again, I'm thinking more into the detail of, you know, a situation arises where they want to get rid of a cottonwood tree or Salt River Hills has some buckthorn, you know, are, are we rolling in, you know, staff led programs like that where we would have forestry go out and clear if that was on a wish list? You know, how are we handling those types of things?
Buckthorn removal is highly driven by volunteers.
Right, but if the neighborhood says we're sick of this buckthorn and we want our grant to go to get rid of that, I mean, how are we approaching that? Or dropping a thirty foot cottonwood tree, or, you know what I mean? Because those are things that I, I know neighbors have issue with, or, so. It's hard to know what to plan for when you don't know what to plan for, right? What, what, what do people want?
Well, just to back up, are we just giving some general high level guidance tonight?
Yeah, just high level. This is trying to answer these questions, but, and trying to answer these questions gets into more questions.
Right. And are we going to end up saying no more than yes, I guess?
And I, and I certainly understand that, the staff's team understands that. Our, our starting point for the work on this is simple and accessible to the community, right? I heard that direction from the city council throughout the governance process and, and throughout today's conversation. It's part of the reason why I was encouraging you earlier to be focused on outcomes here because there are a lot of very technical questions that we're going to have to answer and be clear about. What I am hearing is consistency and cohesion with other programs. Sounds like it's important to the majority of the council. There was also a question on, are we providing guidance in terms of grant applications and what that process looks like? I think in the spirit, from my perspective, and I take your direction on this, but from my perspective, as we build a pilot to be simple and intentional and easy with neighborhoods and with the community, likely we're going to have to provide some guardrails and some suggestions. At the end of the day, the, the assumption from a staff perspective, based on our research, based on our conversation to date, is that ultimately the council's going to make the determination on whether those grants are awarded or not, right? That the council will have, will need to have some say from just purely from the feedback we've gotten from the city attorney and just generally in our process, that you all will have conversations about those grant applications and then we can evaluate how that process goes. And I think the pilot then can inform us on answering perhaps, hey, did we miss the mark? Are we on track? Are we not? Said more simply, I do think there are going to be some unanswered questions. And I think the pilot program is going to be an investment in learning as much as it is an investment in participation, community engagement and budget.
When we did the cul-de-sac islands, it was about beautification. So you're looking at outcomes, so beautification. The rain gardens were about the environment and water quality. So those are the big picture pieces that goes into that. Anything around the lakes, whether it's, it's investing in making sure that we remove all of the invasive species that's infecting the lakes. Those are, okay, we can focus on all of that. And, you know, I just see anything that engages our community in decision-making, I just think about Williams Drive. And that's going now on two years. And how much neighborhood participation went into that? And the feedback that we received, okay, no, staff said, well, oh, we'll put a, a, a roundabout over here from judicial and, and Williams Drive. And then, and the neighborhood said, no, so, okay, no, we're not going to look into a roundabout over there. So they have input. What are the areas? Because I think what we're talking about is giving more voices to the community and what they want in their neighborhoods. Well, they didn't want a roundabout. So Mark, you're not going to have a roundabout on Williams Drive, right? And they said, no. And then they won't give any, any land for the roundabout. So, you know, but we heard. So I don't know, which, so three, four and five, what are you thinking?
Yeah, Mayor Council, absolutely would be definitely helpful to get a little bit more feedback. Certainly on question five, we haven't gotten there, just as we're thinking about defining the program as we finalize that up for our next conversation. Would be helpful for some insights on thinking about program administration and how we fund that.
So what, what I would like to see, especially since we're also talking about bringing our, our programs together into kind of one more cohesive thing. What I would like to see is, and I realize that probably this cannot be done totally this way. But I would like to take a look first at option one, which is, okay, what do we, what do we reevaluate? Also, when we bring these other programs in, if they're sharing what we already do, we don't need to double count that. And then get down to a little bit firmer of a number. So then we know, okay, are there hours left that we do need to find additional funding for? And if there are, then we take a look at that and get a firmer idea on that number. But my preference is, of course, to look at reallocation.
Thank you. Other, other feedback on that question?
I'm, I'm with the mayor. I think five thousand's a little bit on the low side. I think it's our.
If five thousand was what we used in two thousand.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollar grants.
That's not going to be doable.
And I'd be better with fewer grants than more grants at smaller amounts, frankly. We, we do want something that's going to have an impact in the neighborhood.
You want to make an impact. The rain gardens are a huge impact. We won lots of awards for our rain gardens.
And we should say, now that we just said what we said, there's going to be a dollar limit. So whatever the individual one is, it's not going to make the budget allocation for the program get any bigger. It is going to be divided by, by ten thousand dollar grants, and that means fewer grants. But I agree, more meaningful and more impact when they get done. And if it's a highly successful program, we talk about renewing it the following year.
Yeah. From my perspective, we do so much in engaging our people in what we're doing. But what we're talking about here is beautifying or adding environmental amenities into the, into a neighborhood. That, that rain garden thing was a huge success. And so was the, all of the islands. Because I know in my neighborhood, when we did that, we bought more trees and flowers. And it was a project that the whole, our small little neighborhood all did. Doug Daniel and the Abix also in their little island.
Did.
And they won an award.
But we already have programs for that.
Mm-hmm.
It's already happening. But spend the money how you want.
Okay.
So, thank you. Other.
What do you need?
I'm going to need a little more specific direction from the council, right? There, there's some, some fundamental questions here that we'll need to inform our work forward to bring a pilot project back to you. So I hear some open conversation on funding source, perhaps leaning towards some additional creativity or the flexibility of, of sale of surplus property, but not a complete no on EDA. I can, we can work with that as we, as we continue to define a program. There was some conversation on the amount that the city council wishes to invest in grants. And again, from an outcomes perspective, I do think a threshold, a program maximum is not only practically important for us, but our research suggests that that's an important component of a pilot program. We've suggested two options, a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars, based on the mean or the median numbers coming out of our research. Does the council have direction for me, for our team at this point on grant investment?
Yes, my preference is that it's ten thousand dollar grants, but it's a hundred thousand dollar cap. Because again, this is a year one pilot project. So I, I want to see how it works, get the feedback.
And, and so the.
Then we can look at adjustments for other years. That's my preference though.
Yeah, a hundred thousand, and then the source for me is rightful grants, the McKnight Foundation, Bloomberg. And, and the sale of property, but not the EDA. For me, not the EDA.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, if, if the hundred thousand can be funded by the sale of property, then you don't have to touch the EDA. I think the EDA, from my perspective, was a hybrid approach if we needed a little extra money. It's not the primary source. It's the secondary source.
There's so much that we need to get done with the EDA.
I saw, I either, I either heard comments or saw three head nods on a hundred thousand dollars being a program threshold, and that's helpful for us to create some structure here. I'm also hearing a preference around.
Because it's more than a hundred thousand.
Yep.
You've got the two hundred, three hundred thousand to set it up.
For the grant investment, yeah.
So it's, it's more like four hundred thousand.
These are two different questions. This is question number three. So what you're talking about is question number five.
Well, I get ahead of you?
You got ahead of us. Slow down, you move too fast.
And then I'm hearing on the.
You're right, you're right.
I mean, I'm hearing less enthusiasm on EDA, perhaps more enthusiasm around flexibility. I'm hearing less enthusiasm on EDA, perhaps more enthusiasm around flexibility of the use of those grant dollars from a question number three grant funding source perspective.
Yeah. And the sale of land, because that's new money.
Thank you. And then, Mayor Council, question number five. I know Councilmember Schultz had a preference on looking at some reallocation and then figuring out what that might look like.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the hardest one, the program administration, because that comes out of staff time and how much time. So for me, I want to understand better what that cost is going to be, other than what you have presented now, but as we continue to move forward. Because Dan G is right. And already, you've expended a lot of staff time and money on this, so.
We probably should point out to the general public watching this that when we bill staff time, we're not paying ourselves. And really, the function of billing staff time, from my perspective, is making sure that we are using staff time for the priorities set by the council and the leadership of the city. And so we're not just, we don't just keep piling on more and more, right? It really is a capacity question, not a dollars question. Does the staff have the capacity to take this on without not, you know, without halting work on other already identified, approved priority projects, right? And what helps us, keep us in check, is the billable time. Because then you look at that and you go, okay, that means we're, staff's going to spend $200,000 or whatever that number is on this project, which means they're not going to be able to spend time on other projects.
And that's the issue, I believe, because we don't have the capacity, because we looked at staffing right and how many, how much staff time, staffing we need. And that's a challenge. And it's still a challenge today, because when we talk to the city manager about certain things, and he says, I don't have the people. So.
If it's a question directed at me, I do not have the capacity-
Yeah.
-from a resource perspective to just simply assume 25 to 3,500 hours of staff time.
Because the white paper also identified that you're going to need one or two FTEs, depending on how big the project is, according to the white paper.
Yes, and from a, purely from a managing the organization perspective, to peel back the curtains of operations here for a moment, that's why we presented the options as we did, right? We know that the pilot program likely will take 25 to 3,500. What I'm going to say broadly are additional hours. That's not ours, considering my time, the leadership's team's time. That is pure program investment administrative staff time hours. And we're trying to be as flexible as possible in those numbers and respect the research that we have, which generally says between one and two FTEs, so between 2,000 and 4,000 hours, right, from a research perspective. From a pilot perspective, program perspective, I also don't want to allocate FTEs to this project, right? It's a pilot project. And we should assume and be effective with resources in the organization. But I don't want those two realities of the operation to be co-mingled, because I think it's important for the council to understand that if you're asking me right now, can I absorb 2,500 or 3,500 hours administratively in this organization? The answer is absolutely no.
No.
And that's where the question comes in. Do we want to talk about what we don't do from an outcomes perspective? And I'm gladly will bring that back to you in September, because that is going to be a decision that I'm going to have to make. What aren't we accomplishing this year that we said that we would? And who's going to accomplish that, based on the council's strategic priorities and the direction that you've provided me and all of the other things that we have moving through the organization? What I don't want to be confused in this conversation is, either for the council or for the community, we just don't have the flexibility operationally to absorb those hours. So kind of two different points, I think, that are important as we build to a reality of running a pilot program.
Given the fact, Mayor, that this project is not necessarily time-sensitive, we can choose to execute on this when we can actually execute on it. And we have the information. So there is no, there's not a, we're not going, you know, this really has to be done in this year that, you know, we want to continue to move it forward, but we got to, as-
I think when we had that one conversation-
Slow, steady, predictable, right? And thoroughly vetted. So my question is, how do you see, for the city manager, Greg, how do you see the landscape over the next couple of years, really through 2026, for staff demands changing in any way where this project or a project of the scope and size might better fit?
Well, the org analysis does not have additional for this activity.
Broadly, Councilmember Keely, thanks for the question. Broadly, and we've talked about this as a team, between the council and the leadership team, we're in a tough spot resource-wise. We've had a very hard year, and I'm just going to leave it at that. In terms of predicting what that looks like between now and 2026, I think the organizational analysis provides us with some context for that. We waited on even pondering the addition of most of our administrative staff resources in the org analysis to prioritize police and fire. And that's largely currently where we are, right, to date, in terms of the 28 or so FTEs. I'm getting some head nods that have been implemented. So while full implementation of the organizational analysis should help the landscape on the administrative side of this organization, we've talked about from an organizational analysis perspective, the reality is, we are one of the leanest, most efficient administrative city organizations, operations out there that we would compare ourselves to. Said another way, your finance department, your HR department, my office, the list goes on, and kind of the city hall side of operations is one of the leanest that exists, right? We have the data that proves that out from an organizational analysis perspective. I think there's a point of pride and real intentionality in using administrative resources wisely, and that's a good thing. And we should continue that tradition in terms of delivering great results, efficient and effective results for the community. What it does mean is, is I don't have a whole lot of wiggle room from an administrative perspective, right? And this project has proven that out, right? Like largely, this project has been a project that I've worked on and that a few people around this team or around the table right now have worked on. And that's not a bad thing, it's not a good thing, it's just our thing. And so as we look at the next couple of years, I don't see that changing significantly. We aren't planning for additional administrative resources. As a matter of fact, this team, I, we have made some decisions to eliminate some administrative positions, right? As a deputy might retire, I'm looking to kind of this dual role model, right? Not to pick on you, but I'm looking at a dual role model, right, to be more effective with our use of administrative resources. That has a factor on the flip side of the administrative side of the organization for us to figure out some of these other things. And we can do that, it's just going to take some time. So to more specifically answer your question, I don't see things changing from a capacity perspective significantly on the admin side of the organization in the next two years. We aren't planning for that right now. I do believe that the 25 to 3,500 hour estimate is not just an estimate, but a very thoughtful analysis of what this is likely going to take. And with your direction tonight, with the feedback that I already have, I think we can start to figure out what impacts that might have across the organization or the operation. And as the council answers question number five, how do we fund program administration, some direction on, do we want to pause on other things? Or do we maybe want to reprioritize, look at timeline, or look at other resources? That will help me to figure out, how do we operationalize that?
So the way that I look at all of this, and I love that we get all of this information from each department. Tonight, we are going to be hearing from HR, we're going to be hearing from Public Works, and we're going to be hearing from Community Development. And I look at what you all are doing and all of the activities that you have already on your plate, and you have identified who's going to be doing what. You have three main focuses, but you all have focuses on safety, community engagement, and all of that. So when you say to me you don't have the capacity, I can see it in writing.
Hosing down like 46 pounds.
You know, and all of that. So, and I, I mean, we just had a badging for, it's Jenny and-
It was my call.
But the thing is, you talk about taking care of the well-being of, and I'm proud of the work that you're doing, but then I also get very concerned about your well-being. Jeff now has a dual role, his well-being and Jenny's well-being, Tanya and BJ, I mean, everyone around this table.
Mike has a dual. He's HR and communications right now.
Yeah, all of, they all have a lot of dual roles on this leadership team. So yes, I'm proud of the work that you're doing and you're running lean, but at what expense? The well-being that you're continuously talking about, making sure that you take care of the well-being of our employees so they can better serve our community? If you guys are all sick and stressed out, that's a concern to me. That's my concern. You looking out for everybody else? I'm looking out for you guys. I read all the stuff that you sent, that you bring before us. I mean, before that, there was IT. IT has a lot of, Jenny had all of the stuff that she wrote about, parks. Bethany's department is really lean in reading her background. I haven't seen police and fire yet, but I just know that that's going to be, I've seen all of the, oh, I love that you guys now give us reports. So, all of your written reports and all of the background that you gave us with regard to police calls and fire calls. And you were great at telling us that some of the reduction had to do with what we went through from February 18th. But on the other hand, I see an uptick on mental health cases, both in fire and police, and an uptick in all of the behavioral health, even though we have two embedded social workers. And now you're both working on making sure that we have a full-time medic in BHU, but that hasn't been implemented, but you're thinking about that. But you don't have the staff capacity in both. So I love the backgrounds, all the written report, because I can go see, and then you're talking about. So yes, I'm proud of all the work that you're doing and you're being lean, but my concern is all of your well-being.
And Mayor and Council, I would say that my concern across this organization, I don't care, I don't care department or role, we are focused. And from my perspective, we will continue to be focused on the care and support of our staff for the benefit of the community. It's how we care well and support the community. That being said, I also think that it's important that we're having the conversation of how we would fund administration of a pilot program like this.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that although it might feel a bit laborious right now, it's important for us to have priority-based conversations. I also think that, back to your point, Mayor, this is one of the 18 action items in the leadership team's work plan this year, right? We also have planned for this. So with the council's feedback tonight, I'm not hearing a whole lot of enthusiasm from the city council about adding new resources to fund this. So that gives-
I have a question on that. If we are funding 10 pilot, 10 grants at $100,000, and option two was actually $200,000 from the sale of land, depending on how you prioritize and bring back the proposal, it could be that that second $100,000 from the sale of land may be something that we could allocate towards ours.
That's a great question. As we've presented option one and option two across these five questions, they're independent. So option two isn't a column that is associated with each other, it's an independent question. So short answer is, what I've heard from the council tonight is, $100,000 maybe is a better place to start, like broad, this is what we're willing to invest in grants. So I would take that forward. And we would come back to you then with program administration conversation that we talk about, how do we prioritize the 2,500 to 3,500 staff hours that we think the pilot's going to take? And we ultimately would present to you a program, a framework, for lack of a better word, of how we would administer the pilot program, its timeline, resource allocation, answering all of these questions, all of the questions that we've talked about tonight, and then informing staff's work as we continue on to perhaps learn that there's some flexibility in doing something different, based on the council's feedback in September, when we would come back to you, or based on our learning as we continue to kind of work through and be flexible with the pilot program.
No, I think that sounds good. I think that sounds really good. And I think that's what we're, are we giving you what you need at this point so that you can start that work and come back to us?
I, at this, I would say yes, at this point in time. I would also note that I'm sensing some hesitation of the council, and we have some more work to do, right? And that's the intention of building, getting this feedback and building a pilot program to come back to you, to present, and ultimately to then start post-September in terms of implementation. What I'm hearing on neighborhood, how we determine neighborhood boundaries, is a hybrid of option one and option two, but really option two, let the community inform with some, with some, what I'm going to call guidance and structure, some guardrails. Let the, let the, let the community determine what the map looks like. Secondly, on the advisory group, it's all about the community. Let the community advise us, and we will obviously keep the council updated as we work with that task force or advisory group or whatever we call it. We'll structure that and bring it back to you in September. From a funding source perspective, leaning towards the sale of surplus property, perhaps exploring other grants, maybe not using EDA funds primarily as a mechanism of it limiting what the grants might be able to be used for, and the question around the council's priority investment of the EDA investment fund. On the grant investment side, a combination, setting a $100,000 threshold, but knowing that larger grants and perhaps, as a result, fewer grants, perhaps is the better course to test out the pilot program.
Pardon me, Greg, would we word that up to 10,000? So a person putting in a grant for 6,000, the other four just is available for now?
Goes back into the pot.
Yeah. So it's up to 10,000.
So focused on that $100,000 program investment on the grant side of things.
Limit that the program is only $100,000.
And then the operational investment, the council would like us to consider how we reallocate staff and resources to accomplish the direction that you're providing.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Chairman? I know where you are.
I didn't say anything.
It makes sense to him. He's passed since the beginning.
I just want to see how you work it out.
Yeah. All right. I think that's it. Everybody is, yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
We will be back to you in September.
Okay, very good. Now we're going to move into roundtable, and Councilmember Keely, I think this is yours, but I have some input into all of that. This has to do with the Consider Limiting Gambling License to Burnsville organization. And our staff did a fine job of looking at our neighbors. So, Michelle? Because here's what, because- Because here's what, because I think the motivation for your putting this here was a conversation you had with Alliance members. Well, we had a meeting and I told them that you brought it up, and this was scheduled for our July. And that was that only one person who had that thought. Everybody else said free market. There was an agreement at one point that between the leaders of the Lions Club at that point, you know, you're not going to come into my city.
Step on each other's toes.
And that all went away because they said, the guy who has worked with this program from the very beginning said, we always believe in just the free market. We can go anywhere. So I don't know if you want to do that. Michelle, you did, you did the research and every city, you want to do it?
Madam Mayor, City Council, we did just do a quick check across the metro to see what other communities were doing, and we did find that most communities of suburbs, all communities but one, would allow it with a stipulation of some sort or another if they had like 15 members or a percentage of members that were residents or lived or worked in the city or those types of things. But, you know, this is something that is up to the council if they want to implement more restrictions.
All of them, all of them said, yeah, you can come and have pull tabs in our restaurants.
So. We currently do not ask the organizations if they have members that are residents of the city, or if live or work in the city, or those types of qualifiers. Our current code says that you must be a Burnsville organization or adjacent city.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I did bring this up because I heard a complaint from our Lions Club that the Lions Club of Lakeville came all the way north to the north side of Burnsville and worked with the bar to get their license. I don't have a problem with allowing the neighboring cities. I think Egan's program is probably one of the better because that, in a way, kind of forces it to be more local to Egan. But I think that, because we have so many overlaps with school district with Lakeville and Apple Valley and Egan and Savage, so, you know, having those border communities allowed in, which I believe is what our policy says, is good, because the school districts don't follow city borders, right? And generally, these are booster programs for the Lions that are running these gambling operations. They're not all nonprofits. I think this highlighted a situation that I think if we had one thing in our policy, if it were me, it would be just that the local organization would have first right of refusal. In other words, someone couldn't poach an organization like what happened without the local organization having any idea that it was happening. And, you know, if the organization itself has decided that they don't really care, so be it. But one of the members in leadership was a little upset that they had no idea that the Lions of Lakeville was coming all the way to the north side of Burnsville and doing bar, pull tabs in a restaurant, bar, and they were completely unaware of it. So that's, I think there is just a little bit of homegrown hometown support that I would like to see here, because the question is, are Burnsville citizens eating at the restaurant and buying those pull tabs? Is all of that money going completely out of town and never going to come back to Burnsville? I have a little bit of a problem with that. I think having a first right of refusal of like organizations would at least keep the communication, sort of force the communication, that if Lions, even if the Burnsville Savage Lions, you know, goes down to Lakeville, that the Lakeville Lions is notified. And they could say, that's fine, or no, that's one that we want, it's in our, because then the dollars stay a little bit.
Is that something that we monitor, or is that the Lions Club should have that agreement between?
Well, you know, this is obviously an administrative burden because we would notify, right? So when we get an application, okay, great, have you notified the local Lions that you're coming into Burnsville? And they would, the obligation would be on them to do it, but they would have to, you know, get notification. Burnsville Lions would say to the city of Burnsville, we're okay with the Lakeville Lions taking that location, we've decided we don't want it, for whatever the reason. And then it goes. Because those dollars really are going to travel to a different community. And it's not even like a border location. If this was just across the border, I don't think it'd be as much of a big deal. It's literally in the furthest northern point of commercial area, restaurants in Burnsville, from a Lakeville Lions. I think that kind of surprised me. It's never happened before because we've never had to deal with this, but it did surprise me. And I can understand why they were a little upset.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Keely, just a point of clarification. We do have, like, for instance, the owner of Tavern 13 also owns Coopers in Egan. They did bring in their existing organization with them to Burnsville when they opened the Tavern 13 here in Burnsville. And ultimately, you know, the city can put a limit on who can apply for these licenses, but it's the business owner that has to agree to it, that we cannot, the, the, the organization has to make that agreement with the business owner.
Yeah, that's how it works. And that's why.
I think the way Egan did it helps achieve the same goal, you know, having at least 15 members live or work in, although that may not dictate where the money goes, right? It's still, you know, the Lakeville Lions might have 15 members that live in Burnsville, and the money's still going to go to Lakeville.
Yeah, because I also checked with some of the sporting organizations, because they're all over. Like Metro Sports is out of Bloomington, and they're here, they're at Racks. But I don't know how many athletic organizations in Burnsville they contribute to. I don't know that.
I'd be curious if we have any Burnsville organizations selling in other cities.
Yeah.
Not that that.
Well, Apple Valley Burnsville Hockey would be.
Yeah, Apple Valley Hockey, because they've merged.
They have three locations in Burnsville. Metro Baseball has two locations.
We certainly have plenty of kids that live out in Burnsville.
Because they're at Racks and warehouse.
And they go to Apple Valley.
I don't have that information off the top of my head.
So that actually, those funds benefit both.
You know, I can tell you my experience in bars and restaurants, these pull tab operators come in and they do pay rents to these establishments. And I've been part of organizations where we've kicked organizations out of our bar restaurant because they weren't doing a good job for us either, and we've had to bring someone else in. Because once a bar restaurant has pull tabs, they have, they have to keep doing it, basically, because people come there for that. And if they have an operator that's not doing their job, or they don't feel it's doing their job, and they want to make a change, they should be able to make that change.
No, you're right, because for us, it's always trying to get members to work.
Yeah, if you just restrict it to Burnsville people, and then that's, for some reason, that organization isn't doing a good job in a particular area, that bar owner is in a tough spot now. We're not going to let anybody else go in there. And the organization knows nobody else can get in, it's like. But, you know, you make good money doing it too, so you want to take care of it.
What is your suggestion? Because the Egan parameters is at least 15 members live and or work in.
15?
Yeah, 15. I don't know how they.
I don't know how you count that.
Or you verify it. Enforce it, right? It's maybe the honor system there. We can't. The first right of refusal just requires communication and, you know, the organization that's in the host city just to say, to tell the city in a letter or a call, I'm the president and I represent, and we don't want that location, we're fine with our sister organization taking it. At least that eliminates what happened, which I don't know if that would have been the outcome or not, maybe. Maybe you guys, maybe the Lions would have said, we'd love to have that one.
Egan Lions Club also has, the Egan Lions Club also has.
Which bar are they going to, Dan?
Also has a.
Is also in Burnsville.
Yeah.
The Egan Lions.
Egan Lions, yeah.
Where do they go?
I'm looking it up right now.
Look, okay.
So I would be, I don't want to act on anything tonight, I would be more curious to talk to some various bar owners and see if something like this would create an issue, because those are going to be private agreements among those owners and those organizations. And if all of a sudden we're interjecting ourselves saying, you shall not, I'd rather know from them if that creates a government overreach into their private business.
And that's, that was my thinking around that. And because, you know, when we had the discussion, Roger, who has been doing this from the very beginning, says, you know, free market, keep government out. And he's that kind of person, and I said, I agree.
I don't know, I understand the intent and what Dan's.
Yeah, Egan is in JR's.
Egan Lions, yeah.
Oh, JR's is almost Egan. It's like a, you could throw a stone in your Egan.
Just walk across the street.
That's a little different, but I get it. You know, I think it's, whatever this council wants to do, I stated my position, I'm, I think.
Well, I talked to all Lions and the majority of them said, you know, we'll work with the bars.
Yeah.
I mean, I would assume they could go and approach bar owners as a group and say, we would like to come in, and that would be on them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and based on this, I would suggest they go to neighboring cities and find any bars that doesn't have tabs and sign them up.
Because with the Burnsville Savage Lions, so we have a lot of bars in Savage, I think the reason why, I don't know if it was Ronnie who talked to you, is because we lost the Muddy Chicken, is that what it is? And Carbone's. And that was, to your point, it was with the owner of the bar. And they wanted more bingo games than we can provide. And sometimes bar owners want a lot of activity that drives traffic.
Absolutely.
And so, but with Lions Club, you don't, when you don't have enough people to volunteer to do that.
You may be on something, yeah.
And becomes an issue.
Send them down to Antlers Park.
It's a beautiful park.
The brand new beautiful park that's making our citizens upset that we don't do something like that.
Are we okay just leaving it alone then? Leaving this item alone, Council?
I'm fine leaving it.
Leave it the way it is?
We've already got them already spread out all over the city anyways. A lot of different organizations.
Okay, all right. Now, reports.
Nothing.
You have anything?
You don't have anything. Nope, look at the clock, bro, come on.
That's what we say to you, Dan.
I'm not the one that this meeting dragged out.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good? Kara? Dan?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm good too. Okay, we stand adjourned by acclamation and we will reconvene for the budget meeting.